Good morning, and welcome to the June 16th meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. Would like to remind everybody again that we'll continue to meet in virtual meetings via Zoom in accordance with Executive Order N 29-20. And I will now call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And what I will do again this time is we'll go directly into our time set, which is the update on the COVID emergency. And at that point, when we finish with that, we'll go on to the consent agenda, public comment on non-agenda items, et cetera. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Frankovich, Director Stevens, and Sheriff Hansel to give us an update on the COVID emergency.
Morning.
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. So again, just updating on the numbers as we typically do. For COVID-19 at this time globally, were over eight million cases and about 400,000 deaths. In the U.S., more than two million cases and 117,000 deaths. And in California, 151,000 cases, 5,000 deaths. We've been very fortunate and humbled. Our numbers are looking really good epidemiologically speaking. Are many of the indicators that we are watching, including our doubling time RT, our positivity rate on testing, all look really good. Hospital capacity and our contact tracing capacity is good. The one indicator that we are struggling with is getting enough testing done. We really want to see our Optum site utilized fully. And our EOC has been working very hard at reaching out to frontline, essential and critical infrastructure workers to get people in and screened routinely. We are really trying to work with those communities. We have gotten, as I mentioned, authorization to take it off-site and do some testing in other parts of the county and onsite for some facilities. So we are working on that. The trade-off for that is because we travel to set up and operate there. We don't have the certainty of numbers that we do when we stay put to some extent. But it's really important to reach areas of the county. So we are able to have some testing in Willow Creek area through Trinity County and their Verily site, which is like Optum. We were in Fortuna the other day doing testing. And again, the EOC has been working really hard on just trying to get people out there and test. And I just want to take the opportunity to again encourage people to, nobody needs to be tested every week or anything. But if people could make a commitment to get out there and get tested routinely, even once a month or so, everyone, it would help us in terms of our surveillance. One of the important pieces in planning our response is when we look to see how much is in our community in terms of cases, the more robust our testing is, the more certain we can be of our numbers. And so it just really helps us to get more people out there tested. And again, people do not need to have symptoms to go and be tested at all, since we know a significant number of people can carry the virus without symptoms. So that's where we are. I don't know if other people saw it. We are certainly riding this hoping for a medication or a vaccine that will help change the course of illness or prevent it entirely. Vaccine work is ongoing and the predictions I'm seeing are still potentially in early 2021 for a vaccine availability, which seems like in some ways a long ways away, but it's phenomenally fast-paced for vaccine development. There was also an encouraging report today about the use of steroids for treating COVID and for hospitalized individuals. And some really looks like possibly some improved improvement in risk of death for people who are needing oxygen or ventilated. So I haven't gotten to look at the study, just the report on it. So we'll be looking at that. But obviously, we're, you know, anything that can change the course of COVID and prevent really serious illness would be huge in this pandemic. So anyway, in terms of our recovery, we are in the last month or so, about the last month, we've opened, when we received our variants, we've opened retail restaurants, churches, day camps, childcare, salons, barber shops, limited services as a sector, things like tanning beds, groomers, car washes, that kind of thing, campgrounds and outdoor recreation. Later this week, we'll be opening up personal services. And so that includes things like nail salons, massage, tattoo, that type of thing, aesthetic services. And then hotels to leisure travelers are also slated for this week. And then just looking at a timeline, the things that are really out there that are still released as guidance, the bigger items would be fitness facilities and bars. Those items were originally in later phases of stage three because they do represent increased risk in terms of just the nature of their setting. So we're looking at the fitness facilities in early July and the bars to follow that. And so that's sort of just a rough timeline for people. There are a few things out there that we're really waiting for and wanting to see the youth sports leagues for the summer. We do have some entities that are sort of applying under the day camp sort of header and can operate in that fashion. But really, the day camp doesn't allow for that same interaction kind of piece that we can see with youth sports as if they're structured as we think of them. And so we really do want that guidance from the state and have been pushing that as well because we'd like to get the kids out there in July if we can. Basically, I guess the messaging here is that when we, for some people in our community, the pace is too slow for opening, for some it's too fast. You know, where there's really no set path on this that anyone can point to and say, this is exactly the right way. So we're trying to just balance moving forward with monitoring what's on the ground. I think we've all seen nationally, there are some places that have had some issues with COVID who are doing better right now. There are also probably about at least 10 states that are struggling right now. Certainly seeing an increase in cases and in some instances threatening capacity locally. So I think it just reminds us, as I think the NIH director said, we are clearly tired of COVID, but the virus hasn't gone away. And so we really need to really be thoughtful moving forward. So when we started this, we were talking about reopening over many months. We have now opened, I would say, a large segment of our economy to operations in about a month. So quicker than we planned.
Dr. Frankovich, Supervisor Bone has a question.
Yeah, I thought she was wrapping up. I was just waiting until she wrapped up with her.
Okay.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just about set. Was just going to mention that, again, we planned a slower path forward initially throughout the state, but we've gotten some good safeguards in place that help us move forward. And I think the shelter in place basically bought us preparation time and a slowing in the community prevented us becoming really laden with the virus. So anyway, our plan is to keep moving forward. And I think the thing I would ask the community, I've been getting asked this a lot with media questions, is since our numbers look good, can we just sort of back off on the safety measures? And my answer to that is that part of the reason they're looking good is because we're doing the things we're doing, I believe. And also that as we begin to, just as we're doing this pace of opening things up, and again, we're going to be bringing more travelers into the area. Hotels are opening up, campgrounds are opening up. We are going to be seeing the Fourth of July coming. And we are going to have people coming into our community who are coming from higher-risk areas. So I would argue that all of these measures, the masking, the distancing, the hand washing, the sanitizing, the cleaning, all those things are going to become more important rather than less. And by sort of taking care of each other in this way, we can move forward. If we abandon those things, then we are much more likely to end up in a position where we need to pull back. And so I think those are relatively simple things for us to do so that we can move forward. And I think that's it Supervisor Bone.
Thank you, Dr. Frankovich.
We had some dialogue this morning and I've, and I don't know how many people you've talked to, but I can tell you mine's going into the hundreds. And just my phone was ringing off. Anyway, I've got a question. I mean, we've done great, that's great. The steroid, I started reading that about four o'clock this morning. That was pretty interesting, 35% increase per hospitalization. So that's, when 20% of everybody hospitalized becomes a statistic, you take 35% of that off and things are looking good. So but I want to, we're going to be Humboldt-centric today. I don't care what the nation's doing right now. We're going to be Humboldt-centric. And I know you talk about if we open things up, we're going to have issues. I mean, I don't know if you've been in and about, but since Memorial Day, we've had essential workers filling up our hotels and motels on the weekends. So we've been full, a couple of them have been to capacity, so some of the larger ones. We haven't had any community transmission, that's super. We've got, I think, two active cases and our dashboard has been green for pretty. Bars and gyms, I know you said maybe early July and then gyms and then bars to follow. These are businesses that really need more definitive answers. They need dates so they can tell their staff, because the biggest problem is people get a date and they don't have a chance to bring their staff back. And we're not, we give pretty good variables, but we're not given definitive dates. And if these numbers hold up like we've done, I mean, I understand. And you mentioned that these were in stage three originally. Originally, stage three was going to be August before we got into it. So say that, we almost have to take stage three, old stage three, and realize it's not relevant anymore. I mean, you know, youth sports, being run like a day camp, 12 kids. What's going to happen, day camps usually be 20, 30, 40, depending what they are. So what we're going to do is we're going to price our kids on going to day camp because for a lot of day camps, they have to hire an instructor. Other places are having youth sports and that's confusing. People are going to Oregon for tournaments and things like this. So I'm just, and I know that's Oregon, but I don't think, no state lines. And I think this is what's confusing, we're getting so many people. I was in a business yesterday, three people came in from outside the area and they all had to go back to their cars and get scarves because they're not required to wear masks. Now, I'm fully understood that about half the state is still requiring masks, those heavy urban areas and things like that. And I know you mentioned Phoenix or Arizona is having a big issue. So I think, I know masks are doing the job. I realize masks are doing their job. People want answers on that. They want to know why a lot of the state, we require masks, some states highly recommend. So they'd love to know, if we keep doing good, when does that go away? Yesterday, the governor came out and said, we have to recognize, you can't be in a permanent state where people are locked away for months and months and months. He mentioned all three. And then has to recognize the impacts of livelihoods being destroyed. And we're seeing that, not on a major scale. You know, we've had a few businesses go out, not on the rationale that, but we've had a few businesses go out. We, as somebody who's lived here for 60-plus years, we have to answer to that. Hopefully, you're enveloping that, what those people are going through. The data is showing, we're big on data. The data shows for every infected person, they are infecting one other person. It's never gone higher than 1.4. So doing that data, we're going to have to have a whole bunch of people really quick get infected. And I still don't fully understand the hurt. Should some of us get infected or not? Or is the end goal that nobody gets infected and we're a completely free county? Because if we do that, then economically, I don't know. I mean, we've, the state is monitoring 13 counties, I see. There's 58 counties, so 45 of us sound like we're doing really, really good. And of those 45, a lot of them, as you know, I've been in talking to a lot of other counties on a daily basis, a lot of them are relaxing. Shasta has relaxed, they still have restrictions, they're not a wide-open county. I understand that, they have restrictions. I don't know if their enforcement level is very high, but they do have restrictions. I know people in stores, the people that work in the stores, a lot of them are wearing masks, not all of them. Very few of the customers. So, and they have 48 cases and they're probably a third bigger than we are, or even more. And then the other thing I'm doing, since testing has dropped down, I mean, nobody's, I mean, you don't, you don't list, the testing levels are down quite a bit. Over half of the deaths I keep hearing are done in nursing homes, are most vulnerable. But the people that probably have earned our respect and our work so hard, why don't we allow, or actually, I hate to say this, why aren't we requiring them to be tested? We have a mask requirement, why aren't we requiring them to be tested every two weeks at a minimum? So our most vulnerable, the 50% of the fatalities, we're not, we should have, we should almost have somebody monitoring at every rest home because we have a lot of people in this, in your genre. Should we have, should we have somebody going around or multiple people going around Down King? Multiple people going every day, that's pretty circular, to make sure and monitoring that people are being tested. And where our most vulnerable are more so than we are on the youth sport. So that's, and I know every time we talk about, there's a lot of people that say we're going too fast and a lot of people that are going too slow. Well, the people that think we're going too fast have a recourse. They can wear their mask, they can choose where they go, they can get, if they don't want to go out dining, things like that. The people that think we're going too slow, they have no recourse. They can't open their business, they can't, they can't, they don't have the opportunity to put their employees back to work. So I know there's a lot there, but I, this is probably from 185 phone calls in the last two days and I've narrowed it down to these questions. And I know these are, the people want to be heard and these meetings this way do not allow it because you've got to be a wizard, I have to have somebody get me onto the meeting. So I just, I just want to know, is there any, what do they call it, string in the carrot or carrot? Yeah, whatever they call it. When somebody does really, really good, we do something for them. And it just seems, well, we're thinking about doing that in July. And we're only in the middle of June. So I just think there's people out there struggling and may not make it till July. And that's probably my biggest concern of this whole thing. So thank you for your time, thank you for your efforts, your team's doing a great job. Just keep up the good work, but anyway, keep up the good work.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Dr. Frankovich, you cared to respond to some of those issues and I know we have other supervisors wanting to talk with you as well. Dr. Frankovich.
I'm not, I'm not sure I remember the whole list, but to, yeah, a few points here in the answer.
I got them written down.
Okay, well, that's good. One is that the data looks good and I think we're all in agreement on that. And what that does is it allows us to continue moving forward. It's not a ticket to open everything at once. It was never intended to be that. It's a ticket to keep moving forward and recognizing that anything we do has potential for changing the landscape. And because we're a small community, it doesn't take a whole lot to put us in a difficult position. So that's one answer. A second answer, on the skilled nursing facilities, as I've been reporting, we have, our EOC has been working intensively with our assisted livings, our skilled nursing facilities, we are doing in-house surveillance testing for them on an ongoing basis. The state mandate, and they have to report this to the state, is that they have their employees tested. A quarter of the employees are tested every week. So in one month, the entire staff is tested and that is ongoing. And again, it is reported into the state and we are helping them do that by running those specimens in-house. Our assisted living facilities, we're working with getting those staff there tested through Optum. We've established a coalition phone call to bring these entities together to talk about what they need and best practices. We actually have been doing a weekly survey, sending out to them and getting answers back about their status, about their equipment, about any needs they have for training. And we're going onsite and providing training. Our EOC folks have been incredibly active in engaging these entities across the county and working very hard so that they're prepared. In the end, they're licensed and operated not by us. So we can offer assistance to all of them and work with them. But obviously, we don't run the organization.
Well, I was just wondering, I noticed we were getting, I think, probably other supervisors, we had a couple calling in and they were out of gowns and other PPE. And I didn't know if we helped them out with that at all or if, I didn't know if that's what we did.
Yeah, we do try and help them out. We also try and help them find an ongoing resource to get them what they need because that's just a necessity for every entity is to try and identify a chain that can provide them with what they need. But we do help keep them whole when they're having difficulty finding what they need. In terms of the governor, Supervisor Bone, if the governor is signaling that we can't all shelter in place ongoing and we need to move forward, I'd agree. And I would ask the governor to get us some guidance on things like youth sports that would allow us to emerge. We don't have that yet. We do have guidance for other sectors and we're working on getting those up and going. But that is one that I think is really important for the youth in our community and one that we've been asking for as well as gathering size. So we recognize the need to move forward, but we're looking for that.
Well, and I'm sorry to take this up. After this, I won't say anything to the chair, but the governor has also turned over a lot of that to the county. He's saying, I'd like the counties to run with that. And it's like some counties, like we're making everybody fill out a plan where some counties are saying, you can reopen if you meet all the state's guidelines and they're not asking for a plan. We're all asking for written plans. We're a county that's asking for written plans, but Kings County, I looked at a bunch of counties, they're saying, as long as you meet the guidelines that the governor has issued, you can start opening. So I mean, we are, we are going, we are freelancing a little bit. Can we do that on youth sports and get these, you know, I said it last week, let the horses run. These kids need to get out and play, so.
These entities, the governor's office and the guidance is very clear that they need to both look at the guidances and they need to develop a plan. Every entity needs to develop a plan. The only difference here is that we're asking them to give us that plan so that we can provide feedback. That's the difference. It is not a free ride for people, not if they're following the guidance.
I agree, I'm just saying, okay, sorry.
It's okay Supervisor Bone, you can circle back for sure. Let's give Supervisor Bass a chance, Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to, I'm trying not to take quite the same amount of time because I think Supervisor Bone asked some of my questions. But I just am looking for some clarification. The part about the gyms, seemed like we were talking, you know, once the governors, I know you and I have been emailing Dr. Frankovich. When the governor's guidance came out, you know, told people, like, people got really excited actually about being able to work on a plan. Other places, and I know we're not other places, but I would really, really, you know, I ask that somehow those move up earlier than early July. People are losing their minds right now. And I think it is a place where people can get that stress relief or people are bottled up. And you know, I know not every gym is going to be able to do it. Maybe there's no classes people can have, but I would hope you could consider what can be done, maybe nearer term, that short of, you know, while, you know, open the doors completely. Just because I do think we have some facilities that have the ability to do the personal distancing and other measures and that will be committed to the sanitization effort. So that's just, I really, you know, to me, that's the one I hear most about. I'm not hearing as much about some of the other things that Supervisor Bone mentioned. I was curious, Dr. Frankovich, did you say that there was no guidance from the governor's office yet on youth sports? Or did I hear that wrong?
No, there is not.
Okay, so then my question is, I know that you are, I suggest, I'm not suggest, I suspect you are in contact with a lot of the other health officers throughout the state. I'd ask if you would call Shasta County just to ask what they're basing, what that health officer is basing his decision on to open the sports complex that is apparently now open. So, I need any more information on.
Yeah, that's Karen Randstrom, who is the health officer in Shasta. So I have a call with her every week. So I'll be happy to chat with her about what they're doing up there. I don't know if there's sports complexes or fitness center that they've opened, but there is right now, as I said, there is no guidance for, you know, like Little League for youth interactive sports on appeal, which is what we're looking for.
Yeah, well, I think people are just reading things differently. I mean, instead of phone calls, I get a lot of text messages. So I'm going through what I've ever seen in the last day. Let me see, what else am I thinking of?
So Supervisor Bass, if I might.
I'll just go on masks, okay? I'll just finish on masks. I know we've been getting a lot of things from people that don't want to wear face coverings. And there was one specific last night I got that said there was only three counties and I think Supervisor alluded to it, there's a lot more, I just want people to know that. And I kind of disagree with Supervisor Bone on the respect that, you know, I don't want to force the people who, you know, older folks and who are kind of frail to stay in. I, in my personal, this is my personal responsibility piece, is I don't mind wearing the mask because I'm keeping my germs from somebody else. I'm not so much thinking those masks keeps it away from me, right? So I wish people just kind of look at things a little differently. We all want to get out and we all want to do something, but I think we also have to not just relegate the people who have compromised immune systems and say, well, they should just stay home. Because to me, that's not really a fair choice. So that's just.
I agree, and I think, you know, it's one thing to say it, but you know, senior citizens and people with medical issues need to go to the grocery store and they need to go to the drugstore and they need to be out in commonplaces for other services. And you know, I honestly, I keep coming back to this issue of, you know, the health officer in British Columbia, Dr. Henry, said at the beginning of this outbreak, she said, this is our time to be kind. And I, you know, keep coming back to this idea of, I get it's not, you know, I would not prefer to wear a mask on a daily basis, but it is not a hard thing to do for most people who do not have a medical condition. It's not, it's, and so, you know, it's a small thing that we can do to help protect each other in the community. And so, you know, that is my thing, it's our time to be kind and to make it easier for other people in our community to be healthy, so.
So I wanted to jump in here because I'm actually surprised that I haven't heard this issue brought up already. I've been getting a lot of contact regarding the guidance for hotels. There's concern about some of, so there are people who have been pushing for the hotels to open, are happy that that has happened and that they will be able to reopen on Friday. But now I'm getting concerns about the guidance in that they'll be required to make provisions for if a guest of theirs contracts disease or is discovered to have it. And can you clarify that? Because what people are saying is, well, if somebody contracts the disease or has it, can't they just go home? Why, why should the hotel have to provide housing for them for 14 days?
Sure, it's a good question, but you know, what we wanted is we wanted for hotels and lodging to be aware of this issue. Because what happens is if, you know, if we have someone in the county who is, you know, I don't know, goes to stay at a cabin in the county somewhere that's rented, you know, yes, that individual can travel back to their home and isolate or quarantine there. But if we have a traveler from Ohio coming through or another state or whatever, it is not an option to put them in a car traveling back through across country to get back home to isolate. They may not be ill enough to go to the hospital, but you know, it's not a practical solution, both from a public health standpoint and a personal health standpoint, to expect them to scoot out of town and, you know, drive 600 miles. So it is important for people, you know, it's sort of the consequence. So it is important for people, you know, it's sort of the consequence of traveling in a pandemic, which is both hotels and people who are traveling need to understand that if they become ill when they're a guest at a hotel or in a, a short-term rental, that they, they very well may need to stay put for, until they're able to come out of isolation. Just as we would ask of anybody in their home here, a resident. And so if we don't have them prepared for that possibility on the front end, then it becomes an enforcement issue on the back end. And I think that, you know, it's, it's a nice thing to think that if your guest becomes ill, they're going to just disappear and it won't be a continued issue. But the truth is, they very likely will need to stay where they are. And if that happens, they need to be prepared both in having some extra room capacity to be able to do that. And then also to figure out how they're, how they're going to be able to do that. The issue is different in a hotel that can reserve some capacity versus a short-term rental where the next person coming in wants to rent and move into the space. And so they need to have, think about cancellation policies. They need to talk about the people renting their, their services to just make sure everybody understands that this is a possibility in the time of COVID. It seems like a practical thing to me for people to do is to plan ahead for this because it very well may happen.
Is there a part, I suppose this would be up to the industry that they could, just as you might have a cleaning deposit, have some kind of deposit in case or agree that in case you will shoulder the costs. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think it's a good discussion to have is, you know, it's not our expectation that the hotel has to pay for that stay. But, you know, it also can't be an expectation of a hotel owner that the county is somehow going to be able to put this person somewhere. That, you know, and, and plan for their care. It, you know, it, you know, there, that capacity is not there. So I just think, again, it's just a, a thing that hotels need to think about is in a hotel, they, a person may need to stay put. If they build in that empty capacity, then they'll have the space for that person. And then we can work with them on what that looks like in terms of, you know, how isolation and quarantine and all that happens. But I think not planning for it and then having it happen when someone's sitting on your doorstep is not the best idea. You know, for the hotel or for the person who's ill.
So we're basically talking about people who wouldn't be hospitalized. They would just be moderately ill. Or, and they would just basically be kept out of circulation so they don't pass it on to others. Yeah.
So for example, if you were traveling and you were sick and you had family members with you, the ideal situation would be for you, if you could, to be in a room on your own and the members of your family in a different room. There's less exposure for them that way, less chance that they're going to become ill. They're quarantined from being out and about because they've been closely exposed. And so you can see it's not, you know, it's just not a straightforward thing like, okay, you need to check out and go home.
So, and how would the motels ensure that individuals stay isolated?
Well, we issued isolation order just like we do for people in their homes, that they need to stay in their room. And if the hotel is seeing people who are not doing that, they can contact us. And then we can enforce that, but it's, but that's essentially what we need to do. And there would need to be provision that, you know, somehow these folks are going to need to be able to order food in, do whatever because they, um, you know, they're not going to be able to leave their rooms to go out to eat. And I think the community understands that because, you know, they've been very vocal in the past that they don't want people who are ill wandering the community.
So, yeah, I, I don't want to keep it up. I, but, but tied to that, the other question I'm getting is if this is the case, if people can travel now and, and stay in hotels, et cetera, does that mean it's the end of shelter in place? Because the concept is that shelter in places, you don't travel, et cetera. So is there, is there a new order in wait?
So we did, we put, did put out a travel guidance and I'm revising our order as well to reflect it. The state has not lifted the shelter in place order. The language really still asks people to primarily stay at home and stay local. However, the health officer's order has language that says, you know, we, we encourage people to stay and not travel significant distances for leisure or something like that. So it allows for the possibility of people doing that, traveling for leisure. There's no specific order preventing them from doing that. And so we'll reflect that as well.
So we can see a revision to the order coming up?
Yeah, yeah, I have a, I have a draft right now.
Oh, great. I'm sorry Supervisor Bone, you had another question?
Well.
And then Supervisor.
And the only, the only thing I was saying, that, that order sounds good, but in, in a day of reality, how many people travel from Ohio, come here, get tested, wait four days for the results, tell the hotel they're sick and please quarantine me? And we just, seems like we talked a long time about something that's, I mean, way out there. And if we can drill down, I know the hotels have a lot of problems, but again, I go back to, the hotels were full with the essential workers last weekend. So, and they were full with Memorial Day and we're still at zeros. And I, I'm just.
I'm, I'm not saying.
Have a great grasp for the obvious.
I'm not saying that's something that's going to happen in every hotel every day. What I'm saying is they need to be prepared for the possibility. And Supervisor Bone, I can clearly see an individual who checks into a hotel here who's been traveling, who's then has a temp of 101 and feels like crummy, goes to an E R, gets a test done, is positive, and then where do they go? They don't need to be in the hospital. Where do they go? They go back to the hotel. The hotel needs to be prepared for that possibility.
Exactly. You're right. You're right. You're right.
I, I think what, you know, it's good to have the discussion and certainly we're being aware of that as we open up. Those are the situations. Supervisor Bass.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess it's still a question. Um, you know, reading what's going on in other parts of the country, and yes, we know that's not us. But there are some places that are going backwards. I think Houston is, is what I've been reading the most about with some real concerns. What exactly, I'd heard earlier in some conversation with C S A C, kind of what the governor's plans were going to be to walk things back if it started getting kind of crazy. But do, do you know, is there a specific plan? Is there a certain point where, where communities will be forced by the state to start kind of like reining back again? Or is there actual guidance to what that looks like? You know, what is it that triggers that piece? Point of time, maybe not necessarily here locally, but on the, on the bigger scale?
Sure. Well, I think, and I think Supervisor Bone alluded to sort of the, the watch list that the state has with the 13 counties. You know, so I think there is no written plan that's been given, you know, to local public health Supervisor Bass. I think the, the idea of it though, you know, I would envision that what will happen is that the, the state is monitoring individual counties for what is going on in terms of concerns and whether they're getting into trouble with their, any of the indicators that the state is following. They reach out to those counties, talk about any measures that might need to be put in place in that county to help stem the increasing number of cases. My sense would be that there's a statewide shelter in place order would happen if there are multiple areas of the state that are in serious trouble. And it's actually threatening capacity, you know, broadly in, in the state. But, you know, what, what exactly that number would look like, I don't know. How many counties or what percent of the population? I don't know. But again, I think it speaks to us kind of, you know, again, we're in a sweet spot. It's great. And we can keep moving forward, but we, you know, there, we can't become complacent about the idea that that means we, COVID is gone or we're not going to have to deal with this ongoing. It's not gone. And, you know, we will, at some point, we're going to see more.
Thank you, Dr. Frankfish and Supervisor Bass. Supervisor Madron.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Good discussion. You know, I really understand the struggle with trying to figure out how to keep us all safe. I mean, this, this is very complicated. There's no easy solutions. But, you know, I was thinking about, okay, let's say somebody comes up here as a traveler. They get a fever, they get tested, they're positive. I do see the incredible burden that that puts on hotels and, you know, traveler establishments and stuff. I really do see that, that that's complicated. If this is an individual traveler and they're sequestered in their room, who's bringing them food, for instance? You know, how does that work? I mean, when I start thinking about the technical aspects of how that's actually going to work and who's enforcing what, et cetera, et cetera. And then I think, well, how would we do this in any other kind of an emergency? Be it a flood, a fire, a tsunami, or whatever, and we would set up evacuation centers. And the county would be able to get reimbursed for its cost for doing that because we've declared an emergency. And it's already been talked about that, you know, with the COVID stuff, there is a lot of reimbursements that can occur. And I certainly don't know all the micro details of what can be reimbursed or not reimbursed, et cetera. But from a practical standpoint, a technical standpoint, it would seem to me that if somebody tested positive and they were a traveler and they're in the county, we might want to put those individuals in an evacuation center, you know, that the county would run. And that's the way we would handle any other emergency. We'd set up an evacuation center. But I realize in those other emergencies, you're not bringing a bunch of people together in a room that are contagious. They're injured or something else is happening. So there are all these little differences between all of these things. And I, I certainly don't have the answers here, but when I start thinking through the, the practical and technical aspects of how this might work and with the rental establishments already having shouldered such a massive burden for three months, I, I just, I wish there was some way for us as a county to be able to provide a facility for those people that do test positive that come into our community. And I don't know if that works either. I really don't, Dr. Frankovich and Sheriff Fonz. I, I'm just trying to think out loud and I won't take much time with this. But I do, I do get a lot of calls and a lot of emails as well from all of these establishments that most of them aren't even sure if they're going to, you know, be an establishment anymore. They're hurting so bad. And so I'm just trying to figure out what can we do as a county in partnering to set that up? So I'll stop there. The last question I have is, I'm getting a lot of calls about recycling. When can we take our 20 barrels of glass and aluminum and such and, and recycle that? Cause that's starting to become a big issue. And as all of this stuff piles up, you get more critters coming, you know, with this, which is a different health and safety issue as well. So just wondering, when can we recycle? Thank you.
Sheriff, did I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so just to answer some of the questions about isolation and quarantine, you know, one thing that, that we're, we're not going to do is, is round up everyone that tests positive and put them into like a camp or those kind of things. It's not something that we can, we can do, but there are some things that we can, can look at as far as, you know, when, when the numbers are small, you know, where we can quarantine and isolate someone, let's say they are a traveler and they're in a hotel. There's, there's, there's things that we can work out and then we'll have sidebar discussion with our policy group about how we can possibly finance something with the hotels or those kind of things. There, there are, there are some avenues for those kind of things to, to make sure that the hotel, if someone doesn't have the means to pay, can, can look at that. So we'll, we'll consider that aspect of things. But, but, but forcing people into a, um, an area to, to do their quarantine, there, there are so many issues with that. You know, and we would have to isolate people, you know, individually and, and those kind of things. And, and so there's a lot of, a lot of, of issues with that. But, but I think we can do is we can, we can work out with our policy group some way that ensure that hotels and motels, you know, do, you know, get, get, you know, reimbursed or, you know, do get some compensation for holding people that do test positive. Yeah, so that's, that's somewhat reasonable.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just was going to tell Supervisor Madron, I've been working on the, the recycling issue. Have some information from the state. It's really confusing right now, but I'll see what I can pull together for you. The, I think the question is that I'm getting from most people is it almost sounds like the buyback is not going to happen anymore, that eventually there will be the drop offs. But I'm not sure the, the C R V, you know, cash back kind of thing is going to be working anymore. But I'll work to get more information for any of you who are interested in that. And Supervisor Madron, I'll certainly have you on that. Oh, and also, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that before we're done, that somebody makes, you know, there are some questions coming to us on the chat. And I'm just hoping that if they don't talk over public comment, you're going, going to go back to that and check on them.
Yeah, I did. I, I've seen a few of them and brought them up, but I'll keep tabs on that. Thank you so much Supervisor Bass. Supervisor Bone.
Representant on Humboldt Waste. And just so everybody knows, I think, sad but true, there's, there's no market for recyclables. So they're no hurry. They are still recycling. You can put them in, you can separate them with a pickup for people that have pickup. And you can also separate them and drop them off at your regular dump. If you go to a place and they will sort through them, they are still doing that. It's just there is no essential buyback setup. And I'm not so sure if it's going to be, which is going to cause some problems for people that pay that nickel and everything else. And for anybody, if you've got 20 barrels of recyclables, zero waste will tell you how to get away from using all those bottles and cans. So.
So I, 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 well, sorry, excuse me. Supervisor Wilson, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Uh, just kind of going through my list of the stuff here. And I appreciate the idea of being Humboldt centric. But again, you know, as we really talk about the opening up of travel and it does seem really mushy between opening up places, which the businesses receiving travelers and then not really having a strong or again, a squishy mandate from the state about travel. It's, this is going to be really confusing. It's not going to be well-understood by people. And this is why I do think precautions like masks and hand washing and just being extra vigilant in this time is something we really, as a community that's been protected by our geographic isolation. I mean, people are talking about how New Zealand has beat, you know, COVID. Part of that is because they're an island. Oftentimes Humboldt County is kind of like an island. I mean, in many ways, we receive fuel by barge, right? I mean, that should, that it's, it's, we're, we're, you know, that isolated and, and protected in that regard. And as, as we, in, as, as some segments of our, of our community are inviting visitors from other places, we need to be, I think, extra vigilant of that. And, and I think it's important that we take that into account. And, and my message to many folks has been also as traveling, it becomes more of a thing to really make sure that we manage our expectations about that too. Because as traveling occurs both into our community and externally, and remember, a lot of our flare ups in our community have come from people traveling outside our community coming back, right? And, and that has been an issue. And so understanding that every plan for travel should be tentative. And, and that communities elsewhere as well as our own could see changes that then we may have to dial back on some of these things and be, you know, have our expectations. Be aware of that. I just, I wouldn't make plans that, that are, that, that you can't get a refundable, you know, some, you know, something in terms of your travel. I think it's pretty important in regards of that. It's interesting that we're kind of lumping gyms and bars together. I know that's kind of coming from the state, but I really view them as very different situations. I mean, just alcohol alone changes the dynamic of people's awareness in, in situational awareness about what's going on. And also even just what, you know, inhibitions that, that are part of these things. And I, I, I think that, um, working on our, on our gyms and getting the, getting something going is, is important, but also to remember, I mean, you know, there was a life before the popularity of gyms. There was exercise before that. It is possible to do. I do know that many folks, even in my family, are doing, you know, online Zumba and yoga and other things too. So it's not, you know, there is, there is a hybrid for that. But I do think it is important that we, that we, I would prioritize personally that over, over. that over, over bars in terms of safety. Although as a fan of bars, I mean, I would love to go to a bar, you know, I just, but, but I, I can understand that. And so I think that's important. I think the other thing too, is there's a lot of focus on the numbers related to deaths. And we don't see a lot in terms of permanent damage from, from COVID. And so folks that have been hospitalized, many, many of those people, and again, the hospitalization rates in many places are up to 20%, you know, in terms of after infection. And then there's a, like a large number of those folks who have permanent lifelong damage to their, to various parts, basically organs in their body associated with this. And we're not really hearing a lot about that. I just want to, you know, it's not just you get it and either you die or you're well. I mean, there's, there's, there's actually a lot in between there that is, has long-term impacts to the human and to the community itself. I think we should be aware of that. Testing, I think, and like, I, I've been pushing that test. I got tested for COVID. I want people to know that the, the, the part that was probably the most inconvenient was just signing up, which wasn't actually that inconvenient. It was just like a phone call and you can do it online. The test itself, five minutes or something like that to go through, you know, to park and get in. I don't know, maybe 10 and hey, there's a hot dog booth there if you want to get a hot dog. I mean, it's, it's, and I really, I, I think it's, it's a civic duty, you know, to get in there and at least try it out. Like I'm encouraging everyone to just go and do it, especially, and we're having, you know, people are having, we're having our graduations and protests and other stuff. And I, and I, and I think that folks who are getting more and more out in the community have a civic duty to also do this testing because it is part of data gathering and, and we need those, that data to, to help us move forward. So I think that's important. And then in terms of youth sports, I think it's, you know, yes, we need to get kids outside. But if we're having a hard time, again, creating youth sports under the construct of what we've always done in this current const, in this current, you know, time, it's really important that the adults in this situation come up with creative ideas and ways that may be outside those constructs. You know, it's like clinging to traditional ways of doing things. Just because we've always done it that way may not be what's best for the kids at this moment. What's best for the, for the kids is getting out and moving our body, their bodies and their, their minds and having those interactions. And I think that, that if, if we need to be creative as adults and purveyors of the, of sports in general, that I think it's really important that we, that we all think creatively about how that works and how that functions in this time. And again, you never know, well, come out of that. There could be some really positive outcomes. But in the meantime, not doing things just because you have to do it the old way is, is not a good reason not to do things, especially getting young people out and, and, and running around. I think it's very, very important. And with regards to, you know, the ability of people to come into a meeting in person with regards to our board meetings in this constructive way we're doing it right now versus Zoom. I mean, for most people who come into our board meetings, they have to operate a vehicle, a car. You know, that technology is actually quite complex when you think about it. And so we, we should be doing everything we can to help constituents be able to, you know, be able to comment in this process and in this way. And, and hopefully we'll, it will have some sort of hybridization in the future where people can actually comment and, and have public comment both in person and hopefully using these technological ways of doing things. I mean, it's, it's, it can be confusing. It can be hard. I got a lot of constituents who, you know, don't want to use email or can't really just, they're just, it's, it's, it's been a long time for them or hard time for them. And, but at the same time, we all should be connecting and maybe the cap, maybe we, I've, I've referred people to our staff to help them get through that process and, and they've been able to do it. So I want to encourage people to engage with their constituents early. If we know they're going to be wanting to do this and get in there and, and be a part of it. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While you talk me into it, Mike, I'm going to go in and get tested, so. I wanted to mention, Dr. Frankovich, that when Optum or the mobile effort is going to go out into the Willow Creek or anywhere into, into the outer hinterlands of our county, let me know and we as supervisors can work our networks and get the word out in ways that maybe are broader than what, what you guys have access to.
Sure.
So I would love to see us communicate on that. And I'm sure that Hoopa, Witchpeck Orleans would love to have better access, not just Willow Creek. So let me know and I'll work that area and we'll get you increased numbers when you do go there. But I am going to go get tested. Thanks, Mike, for the encouragement there. I really liked a lot of the stuff that Supervisor Wilson was talking about. These are really unprecedented times and we have to be creative and innovative and really think about how we're going to move forward in a positive way here. So thank you for that. You know, as my observation in Trinidad, which is kind of a traveler Mecca, and I go down into town every day, is that the majority of the people that aren't masked are travelers. You know, really a, a great number of local people are masking. When I go into stores in McKinneyville, Arcata, Eureka, Trinidad, I'm seeing a really high incidence of masking and I really like that. But when I look at the traveler's situation in Trinidad, there's much less of it. So I was thinking, wow, okay, how about four signs? I mean, if we had four signs at the four entrances on our main highways, Highway 101 South, 36 coming in from the east, 299 from the east and 101 from the north. If we just, we've got a sign shop at Public Works, let's put up four big signs and say, masking required in this county, you know, so that we notify people as they're entering the county. That's just one way. I know we do it at the airport as well, lots of signs there and stuff. So that's just another thought. And then folks are asking, you know, if there isn't going to be any CRV payback on that, then the state's going to have to drop that nickel as Supervisor Bone mentioned. You know, we can't have it both ways. And I frankly hope they keep it because solid waste and, I mean, he, he's right. We got to make better choices in our purchasing. That's what we've all been trying to learn how to do better at, both buying and other kinds of things. But, and it's not the county here in this case. But yeah, if there's no return, we can't be charging people that CRV. So I guess the governor will deal with that one, right? So we'll see. Thank you.
I do want to cut in here for a minute. And I, I mean, we're just talking about participation in the meetings. And as we all know, when we meet i- in the chambers, which I would absolutely love to be able to do, but we very rarely have a huge number of people. However, right now on Zoom, we have so many participants that I'm going to ask staff who are not a part of, of the, the meeting, but they're just observing for their job, to watch it on, on either Humboldt Access or, or something like that, especially if they're working from home, so that we can free up more lines, but because we're at our max capacity for participants, which are people who are not having those. So if there's staff out there who can do that, I see the number going down already. Thank you so much. Just watch it on TV or watch it on the web stream. Thanks, thanks a lot for that. And thank you to Ryan for bringing that to my attention. I, I did want to know, on that note, Dr. Frankfitch, and then I will take it to public comment. But I did want to know, where are we with regard to numbers of gatherings? Let's say, for instance, for our meeting, that kind of a thing. And also just in general for families gatherings or workers, how many? You know, have we come down with a number yet or are we just going with the social distancing type thing? Oops, I think your mic cut off.
Yeah, I muted, sorry. No, it's, it's a good question. As I mentioned, we are still pushing the state on providing that because they very specifically have not. And again, the rationale on the state end is that they are still focused on household units. And the reason is that even though we're bringing people together in public spaces such as restaurants and things like that, the idea is not for the public, you know, that from the state perspective on guidance, you go out to dinner with your family and you are not interacting with everyone else in the restaurant. And that that's different than when we're talking about social gatherings where people are interacting. And so that's sort of the distinction that they're making at that level. And again, we have asked repeatedly to at least look at small gatherings to just sort of allow people to flex a little bit out of their immediate household unit in terms of social and, you know, doing so safely. But so right now Supervisor Fennell, there really is not. And certainly if you guys are on calls with the governor, it's a, you know, you can echo the same thing we're echoing back to them about needing some specific guidance on that. And to me, again, if the governor is talking ongoing about us merging, you know, it's one of the pieces we need to talk about at least.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Bone.
I might suggest that we go to public comment because I think that's what the backlog might be. Cause there's people that are, that I, I think are on for this item because they're hoping for all of this great clarification that we're getting from our health officer. So I think maybe that might clear things up a little bit.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. That's just where I was going before you raised your hand.
I'm sure it was.
So with that, so with that, I'll open it up to public comment. And I think that people can see the instructions on the screen. If you're watching, dial that number and then press star nine if you want to be part of comment on this item. So Ryan, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. We will start with public comment.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. I just want to clarify, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Thomas. Welcome.
Okay, so I just want to point off multiple things about this COVID-19. From what I'm reading, Dr. Frankovich was appointed by the board. So I'm assuming she would be an employee of you and a director that works directly underneath the Board of Supervisors. I could be wrong. But with that being said, any director that is giving a report, I feel should be taking notes when board members are asking questions and have detailed notes of that, those questions and be able to answer those questions. If that person can't do that, I think that's something you need to look at when you're evaluating them. With that being said, I, the way I'm understanding this is the decision to open things up is kind of under her jurisdiction right now. I could be wrong, but I think it, it shows distrust to our youth in our community when we say it's okay for everyone from other communities that may be higher sick rates than us to come into our communities and possibly infect our communities. But it's not okay for you kids to go out and play, do different youth activities, use playgrounds, recreation, organize youth sports, all those kinds of things. I think that's really, really disrespectful to the future generation of our community. And I think we should really, really look at that. Also, there were some things talked about in the hotels that they would be, have to quarantine if someone came in and she used the word multiple times and forced that. I would like to know what that entails. I did hear the sheriff say they aren't going to physically take people and put them into a camp or whatever terminology you want to use there. And the other thing I would really like to bring to your attention with this recycling thing is the oil, we can't recycle oil right now. Lots of people, I've tried taking it to the dump. I mean, I'm storing it in a safe location, secondary containment. But I did read a couple of weeks ago, oil was dumped up there at Alderpoint. So something to think about, maybe opening up county health department or environmental health to recycle oil. I've contacted them multiple times and there's no options. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next caller.
Estelle Kansawatska here. Good morning, Thomas. I, I'd like to echo what Thomas said 100%. I came back, I believe it was Sunday from Trinity County, and the traffic on the road was equal to, if not more than normal during this time of the year. Travel trailers both coming and going. So let's, let's just, let's try and be a little realistic here. I mean, it's, it's just what's happening. And I'll be very direct with you. If, if my wife and I were 600 miles away from home and her eyes started coming down with something, first thing we would do would be ask if we could go ahead, you think we can make it home? And sure as heck, we would try and make it home because that's what we're going to do. And I don't believe that you have authority. I've never heard of anybody having authority to preclude someone during any other kind of contagion from actually doing that. And not endangering people on the way, but doing the best we can to get home. That's where old people want to go when they're sick. So that, that's an outlook. Everybody feels that way. I heard a very good idea the other day and I think Thomas was heading that way a little bit. I'm not going to put words in his mouth. But I think we need to look at a new method of determining our policies. And I think the Board of Supervisors on this topic should be the final determination. I think that you should have a Board of Experts, including your health officer, and they would make recommendations. And I think we have very qualified people probably with St. Joseph's, Mad River, Open Door, all of who could put together policy. And, and I don't think we would have dropped elective surgeries and all these healthcare of people being laid off if we had input from those people, reserving beds that they totally knew they wouldn't need. And, and this endangering the public's health, safety and welfare by not enabling our, our, our facilities to operate in a manner that's in our best interest. So I have a lot of angst here. I think it's time for some changes. I also lastly would like to say that we need tests done. Why are we only testing the people who come in contact with our most susceptible once a month? That, that should be weekly. You do the tests, go ahead and make it weekly, run your test scores up. And that, I think that totally makes sense. Same with the airport. It's opening up, I think on the sixth, as far as a non-essential travel, if I recall right. Does that fly Virginia? You can, you can correct me on that one, Virginia. But I, I think on July 6th, that's opening back up or ninth or something like that. We'll need more testing at the airport. I keep pushing for that. Okay, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you Kent. Next caller, please. Good morning.
My name's Linda Hatch.
Good morning.
I have, yes, I'm hearing concerns in the community of increases in asthma. I'm wondering if the pollen and the bacteria is getting caught up in the fabric weeds and we are breathing, breathing it longer and more directly to the nose and mouth. Since most of our county is wearing homemade masks of varying weeds and types of fibers, I'm wondering if this is a possibility for the increase in asthma. People are telling me that their children have had to get steroid injections because their asthma acted up. That was one of my questions. Also discrimination is a concern as well. County health signage for businesses say mask required instead of recommended, giving those with health issues who can't wear a mask the feeling of being an outcast. Excluding them from entry into a place of business is unlawful and is in fact discrimination. The due process clause of the 14th Amendment provides that no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of the law. Is there a lawyer who can speak or will speak to this? Equal protection clause, when those who appear similarly situated are treated differently, excluded from entry into a place of business, all persons are to be treated alike under like circumstances and conditions, yet the signage outside of businesses say mask required. Also, section 131080 is our county menaced by COVID. It doesn't appear to be so, yet the public health officer is still behind the wheel. Says the Humboldt County Code 2210-8, the county health officer can declare a local emergency for up to seven days before the Board of Supervisor authorization is required. This is reviewed every 14 days until the emergency is terminated. I would encourage our board to make a motion to terminate the emergency if there's no evidence to show that our county is menaced by the coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And we have our next caller. Hello? Your, your signal is garbled. Caller, your signal is garbled. Can you get to a better place? Caller, your signal is garbled. We can't hear you. Okay, Ryan, we'll just have to go to the next caller, please.
Hello, caller.
Hello, this is. Yes, this is.
Yes, this is Sandra Ellers, and I just have a statement I'd like to make, if that's at all feasible. All right, um, the curve is flat. The curve is flat. Ostensibly, that was the goal for shelter in place, yet we remain mostly locked down. Mandatory mask edict was issued to prevent the spread through asymptomatic carriers. We now know it is virtually impossible to catch the virus from anyone in this category, yet we are still wearing masks. Dr. Donald Yeely, University of Pennsylvania Medical Center, said your risk your risk of getting into a car accident if you go back and forth across the turnpike in Pennsylvania is greater than your risk of being positive for asymptomatic COVID-19 infection. He said this should give you some reassurance that the risk of catching COVID-19 from someone who doesn't even know they have the infection in our communities is very small. Our Humboldt County numbers don't justify the heavy-handed approach we currently have, as well as the mandates reopening businesses. Our economy here is fragile at best. The lockdown has been very hard on the overall economy and individual small businesses even more so. To the best of my knowledge, there have not been an overwhelming amount of individuals infected while shopping at any of the larger stores. There is no reason to think there will be when opening the smaller ones. Furthermore, there is ample evidence that has shown the masks that are being used are really nothing more than symbolic in their effectiveness. It makes some feel good about wearing them while in reality they're doing little and in fact are contributing to the reduction of our immune systems, which will ultimately make things worse. Finally, yes, we are taking a chance opening up normally, but isn't chance part of life? With everyone wearing masks, we can't see their smiles. We're being told to fear being close to others, to be suspicious of anyone not following the rules. We're losing our humanity while trying to save lives. What is the point? I'm reminded of the country song, "Live like you were dying." In reality, that is what we are all doing. Life was meant to be lived, not sequestered in fear of something that has a very small chance of killing us. We can't stop living because we fear death. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Sandra. Um, next caller.
So we we have several other callers and several other attendees. Um, but no one else has their hand raised. So I would just remind people that if they would like to comment, they just need to push star nine on their keypad. Um, or attending, you just need to push the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen if you're attending through your computer. And we do start, we're starting to have more people raise their hands now.
So while we're waiting for that, let me just say we also had um a message here on the chat uh from Tom Curtis. Are protocols for public workspaces such as schools, offices that are posted upon entrance, public health orders, meaning are these guidelines or protocols expected to be strictly followed in these public workspaces? So we'll we'll get that to that question um afterward, we've taken all of the public comment. Um, so Ryan, do we have further public comment?
Yes, Sheriff Fennell. So I have one more person um who would like to comment.
Okay. You're welcome.
Hi, is this, am I on? I'm Deanna Hardwick.
Yes, Deanna, you are um welcome.
Thank you. I just want to thank Rex Bone and Sheriff Hansel, the two men that have been working so hard to listen to the community and have done a phenomenal job at keeping the peace. I'm wondering why some have forgotten that your job is to protect us citizens that you work for's rights and not our health. I cannot believe how much time you have wasted on possible scenarios from travelers. How about being more concerned about the businesses from people you have sworn to protect that are crumbling right before us? Why is everyone here ignoring the proven unhealthy effects of mask wearing? There is tons of evidence that this is harmful and unhealthy. Are you prepared to deal with a class action lawsuit from business owners being oppressed by your foreclosures, mask wearing, and extended stay-in-place orders? Our citizens are suffering from these regulations while other surrounding states are open and free and living normally and passing through here with their free self. I've heard Dr. Frankovich mention waiting for state guidelines. You are the guideline, ma'am. How can you justify keeping 100,000 people regulated from four deaths and 100 cases here in our county? Please free the smile. We and I also second the motion to terminate mandated order with the flat curve we're not experiencing. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Deanna. Um, Ryan, do we have any further calls that have popped up since then?
Um, Sheriff Fennell, that that concludes public comment. Um, I don't have any other folks with their hands raised currently.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, so uh, let's go back. I heard a few um questions, quite a number of comments. Um, but I did see one.
Sheriff Fennell, that's public comment. Sorry, there is
There is one more? Okay.
Yes.
All right, let's go with the next caller, please. This is that same caller. Okay. You're having a problem with yours. I'm sorry. Hello, caller. Okay, I'm sorry, but we we can't we cannot hear what you're saying.
And we have another, we have another person as well.
Okay. Good morning. Welcome. Tanner?
Hi, yes. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to thank everyone for their, you know, work during this time. We understand this is um kind of unprecedented times in our community and country and world at large in general with this uh um virus and whatnot and all the ways it can present itself. And I guess as a motel owner in Garberville specifically, um, just want to kind of call attention to the issues that are specific to that area in particular, as well as Humboldt County at large uh with homelessness, crime, drug use, lack of resources, lack of sheriff support, lack of uh any ability to get public um support in dealing with these. And it just, I don't think it's really feasible to put all of that burden on individual business owners when we're already trying to comply with the state's directive to, you know, require guests to wear masks. Uh, we are spacing rooms out so that people are social distanced. We don't rent a room uh for, you know, 24 to 48 hours after someone's in it. We don't do stayover service. Um, there's all kinds of, we we don't even check people in. We give them um a code to access their room directly, so they don't even have to come into the office. Um, businesses are already taking these preventative measures. And our, you know, and we we have a 70-year-old mother who, you know, is at is at risk here in a vulnerable population without any ability to be exempt from, you know, the sort of mandate. Um, we can certainly who, you know, become sick while they're in the community. But my opinion is that actually increases the potential for community spread because that individual can't be regulated. Uh, we can't enforce that they stay in their rooms. There's no services to provide them with the ability to stay in their room. They may not be able to afford to stay in their room. Uh, and if we rent a room to someone and charge a security deposit, and that's all the money they have, and we're required to make them stay another 14 days, it puts our staff at risk uh and our community because they go in and out and we can't stop them. We have five employees. How are we going to be expected to do that? And I really just wanted to call attention to that uh issue, which I'm sure I'm not alone in experiencing in Humboldt County, um, but in Garberville in particular, that really puts us at a very um disadvantaged and and risky situation to to, you know, shoulder that uh county support. That's all. And you can uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tanner. Uh, any further public comment on this item?
Sheriff Fennell, that concludes public comment. I don't see any other hands raised. Oh, they that another, I apologize. They come in very quick.
Okay, thank you. We'll just uh, we'll just go to that next caller. Uh, you should know that you're in the queue now, caller.
Oh.
Uh, yes, welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm calling, I I hi there. I'm calling uh to express my support for Humboldt County's Health Officer, Dr. Frankovich. And uh, I would urge the board members to uh support our health officer. Um, I'm not aware of anyone on the board that currently has um a background in science or health. And uh, that's why we have the Health Officer. Um, you may have seen in the news that health officers in other parts of the state of California have been forced to uh to quit and resign. Um, yeah, some have been threatened. And I I really um support everything that um our folks here are are doing for our county and protecting us. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that call. Um, and we'll just take a minute here and see if there are any other callers, Ryan.
Yes, Sheriff Fennell, I do not see anyone else's hands raised, so I would I would uh conclude public comment.
Okay, uh, with that, we uh are concluding public comment. Um, I did bring up one uh about the workspaces. Uh, there were quite a few questions in there and I and I would definitely welcome some uh feedback from Dr. Frankovich, uh Director Stevens, Sheriff Hansel. But there was a question that was specifically directed to Council um from Linda Hatch regarding excluding people who can't wear a mask uh from a uh an establishment if that violates their rights. Can you give us some thoughts on that, uh, Council Billingsley?
Sheriff Fennell, I can give a brief response. The masking orders all have um exceptions for people uh ADA accommodations for people that cannot wear a mask. That is part of all the health orders um to the sense that uh the caller um suggested threatening litigation against the county. I I would not comment on that.
Thank you, Council Billingsley. So now I would uh ask Dr. Frankovich uh to to uh address some of the issues, if you would. Uh, also, um Sheriff Hansel, I know that you mentioned earlier uh in response to Tanner's question um about the potential for the county uh to be able to help if people did wind up in our county a- at an establishment and and needed to be quarantined and they had an issue with that. So um, let's go first with Dr. Frankovich, please.
Uh, well, first, you know, on the hotel issue, again, I I don't want to sort of in- inflate this um as an issue. We wanted hotels to think about this in advance, but I don't envision a scenario in which, you know, hotels um are dealing with vast numbers of people in this particular situation. I just think as the gentleman from Garberville pointed out, you know, you're in a business, you're trying to do everything right. I think it's important. Not everybody would think about this. And I certainly think that, you know, at 2:00 AM, when someone comes to you back from the emergency room um with a positive test is probably not the time you want to be thinking about how to move forward. So I think this planning piece is important. Um, you know, I'm I'm not sure in terms of um particular questions um on this. I think, you know, the, you know, from my standpoint, I think there is some very good literature about masks. Um, no one is is suggesting that masks are 100% um going to eliminate COVID, but I think there is good evidence that masks used in combination with social distancing and um other measures actually can have really um good utility. And I think that's important. And I think that, you know, if, again, if masks in the end reduced our risk for community by 10%, I think that is a fair trade, considering, as Supervisor Wilson pointed out, that we don't know the long-term impacts of this virus, what that will look like for many members of our population. Um, so I think it's it's a valuable tool that we have um to use.
What about the and what about the question regarding uh people potentially um having uh pollen or germs or or whatever in the masks and and the threat to people with asthma?
Yeah, well, I I think there's there's, you know, I'm not aware of any um medical evidence right now that masks are increasing asthma overall. I think we all are aware that every year um the seasonality for pollens and and triggers for asthma can vary. Um, and I would suggest, though, that it is important that people launder their masks um so that they're not, you know, carrying a lot of, you know, allergens and that type of thing day to day on their mask.
Okay, great. Um, I, all right, I think a lot of the other uh input were were um basically statements, but if any of the team would like to answer to that, yes, Dr. Frankovich.
I'm sorry, there was one I I meant to comment on. One is that, again, on the order issue for masking, um not only is there that exemption for medical, you know, people can't wear a mask. And we've really tried in the media to make that clear to people that there may be reasons people aren't wearing a mask, um, including to business owners. Um, however, um, you know, the the business owners um have the ability um to ask people to wear a mask in accordance with the order. They are not required to enforce that. Um, and so that is particularly something that the businesses um can choose um to do or not. Um, I'm certain some businesses feel that having people masking comes in helps protect um their workers and other customers and have embraced that idea. Um, but it is not a requirement.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Frankovich. Um, uh, did either Director Stevens or Sheriff Hansel want to make any comments on the public commenter? Director Stevens?
Yeah, I just, you know, I I everybody's frustrated. I think it's it's a, it's reasonable for folks to be to feel this because we've never been through this before and to feel like your civil liberties have been violated um because you have to wear a facial covering for the protection of vulnerable people in the community and whatnot. I just, I want to acknowledge that because it's it's a real thing that people experience. And I just to echo what Dr. Frankovich said, you know, there's a lot of folks out there who do do worry that we're opening fast and that who do support uh the measures that public health um as a as a field takes in times of of pandemics like this. And so it, there's a reason why we're doing this. We're trying to protect folks, and I would just encourage folks to try to have some understanding about that. Um, we're, we hear you, and we're doing everything we can to move in a pace that is safe for folks, the safest we can possibly be while taking things like the economic impact into consideration. So um, I just thank the board's support for the board's support um in trying to navigate this with us. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. Um, uh, so Supervisor Bone, you had your hand up. Um, anybody else who want to discuss this any further?
No, I I just, I I appreciate what um Ms. Stevens said and um Dr. Frankovich and everything else. And I know a lot of the public couldn't get through. I guess we were maxed out and I don't know if that causes issues, but we were maxed out. So I appreciate everybody's concern. And 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 to reiterate, Michelle says, I I think there's a lot of people out there, me being one of them, appreciate the pace we're taking. But as we move forward, and what I've said is, you know, we talk about transparency and clarity. I I think a lot of the businesses would love to have a number that they could work toward. And I know, I know the number is hard to pinpoint because this is a moving target, but lately the target hasn't moved. So, you know, when we when we talked, I mean, we talked about youth sports. You're right. I mean, a lot of kids, there's a lot of families out doing stuff that they've never done with their families, but it is so important for kids to go to that art camp to have that interaction with other kids to, you know, especially at these young ages. And and to go to all the other camps and stuff like that, not just 12, but larger numbers. And, you know, we're we're losing our 4H, the fairs. Um, there's so much we could be doing more for our kids. And I I I asked that we can, you know, originally, we were following all the governor's orders, and now the governor's not giving us orders, but giving us the free-for-all to, you know, free will to do what we think. And um, like I've said, I'm I'm nowhere a medical expert by any means, so I can't speak to that. Um, I know the internet has created a lot of experts, so um, and we hear from them. But we also have um 136,000 people we have to answer to, and I'm I'm not trying to, I don't want this to be a battle. What I want this to be is the people, what it happens is the people that aren't hearing the message are getting frustrated and they want to go out and 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 go. So as we work forward on this and and spend so much time, effort, um, a lot of people would just like to open up a little bit more. And earlier it was said, I was not saying for older folks, Supervisor must to stay home. I'm saying, I'm careful. I try to wear a mask at all. You know, mimes and everything. It's because I am in that age group. There's three of You know, mimes and everything. It's because I am in that age group. There's three of us on the board that are in that vulnerable group. And so I, we're all, you know, trying to be as careful as possible. And I think they will be careful, try not to get into a big crowd. I'm, I'm kind of losing it in some places because I go to places and nobody's got a mask on. I'm going, well, I look like the oddball here. I look like that anyway. But I'm just saying, if we can be more definitive on these dates for these people that aren't working, that need to get to work, um, I think that would really
You're on your microphone, so.
My went out.
I, and the other thing is, a lot of the areas are opened up that are restaurants and bars. I'm hearing from people that they are opened up, but people that are just bars, all their customers are at the restaurants and bars. So I, I, I just, I, I know that's a very vulnerable thing, but I think, I think what people are saying is let humble be humble and look out for each other. So that's more definitive dates would probably calm a lot of these people that are so concerned.
Thank you Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bass, and Supervisor Madron.
And I just, I wanted to concur that the, um, some more definitive dates would be a lot better, at least for us. I know when we tell people, hey, the guidance is coming out from the governor and Friday, maybe soon, maybe next week. And now it's like, no, maybe July. And yeah, definitive, a little bit more definitive timeframe would be very helpful.
Thank you Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, there was a question earlier about, uh, who Dr. Frankovich works for. And she certainly is hired, uh, by the board and, but what people need to understand is that the California constitution saw these things that might possibly happen. And when there is a health emergency declared, the health officer is in charge and for good reason. She has the background and the specialization and the education to be able to make informed decisions about what's going on for our community based on science and based on the best data that we have. And it's non-political. This, you know, Dr. Frankovich is doing an incredible job of trying to balance a huge amount of, of things for our community. And I support her wholeheartedly. Uh, as well as Director Stevens in the Public Health Department. I appreciated your words there, Director Stevens, on tolerance and understanding. I mean, imagine putting yourself in Dr. Frankovich's shoes, just, just for a second. If you can even handle that, let alone day after day after day, weekend after weekend. I, I mean, you know, imagine if she wasn't in charge and the five of us as Board of Supervisors were in charge. Now, I have great respect for my colleagues, believe me, but politics comes into it, you know, and if the five of us were in charge, oh my goodness, you know. So frankly, I just have to say thank you over and over again to Dr. Frankovich and Sheriff Hansel. You know, because when there's an emergency, the health officer is in charge of the health part, the sheriff's in charge of the other part. And I thank you both for your incredible work to try and keep our community safe. This is not an easy thing. The last thing I wanted to say is before people start putting on Facebook or in the news that Supervisor Madron was suggesting concentration camps for those that test positive. That's not what I was saying. I was not saying that people would be forced into camps or into any situation. I was simply responding to what I'm hearing from the hotel owners and the rental people in terms of the burden that it places on them to try and get their businesses back up and running. And I totally understand that we have to be thinking about what happens when somebody becomes infected and they're staying there. I get all of that. What I was suggesting was that maybe as a county, we could do something to provide a situation. I believe that Sheriff Hansel offered a nice suggestion about potential reimbursements or other types of arrangements that might be able to be made. And so I just want to be really clear. I was not suggesting camps for people per se, just saying, how can we help these businesses that are struggling? And this just becomes one more big burden for them. So I hope that's clear for everybody. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bone?
Oh, I was just, I mean, I've been on record as supporting 100% the job Dr. Frankovich is doing and everything else. That's not going to stop me from asking the questions that are asked of me by the people in the county. And, and, and fully understand that. I think there's been 27 health officers in 13 western states that have quit in the last two months. And I went, went on record and said what happened in Orange County was reprehensible, the way they ran her out on the rail. I, I fully support, but I don't think that support doesn't mean I'm not going to ask questions and ask for those more definitive dates. Ask if there's a date on masks. Do you foresee a date on masks when we can go to, like a lot of other counties? Again, I think over half the state now, some have dropped, have a mask, um, requirement and some have a, um, strongly recommended. So is there an end date for that? People just want to know, how much longer do I have to carry this load? And, and, and as you said earlier, masks aren't a big deal. And I think to some people, it was mentioned earlier that they can't breathe. And there is, uh, as, uh, Council Billingsley said, Quality Body Shop has donated over 4,000 masks, from what I understand, donated. They're building a, um, a shield, a facial that you can wear. Is it as effective? No. But it does, um, cover the letter of the law and does allow you to breathe freely and protect you a little bit. So I, I want to give them a shout out, um, to the Creech family for doing that. But I mean, there are ways to go. So I support it. I'm just going to ask those tough questions because people have these, they don't have, they're not getting the answers, so they have to ask us. And we, uh, would like to get, you know, we have to pass them on to you, even though it sounds like we're being, I'm being mean, tough. You know, all that other stuff. That's, that's what I get accused of.
It's, well, it's a tough job. We're all tough jobs. These are tough times. Uh, people are, especially as we begin to open up. People are really anxiety ridden. I did want to say though, I, I want to clarify something the doctor said over and over. The people wearing the masks are protecting other people from themselves. So the concept that the older people should wear the mask is actually the dead opposite of what needs to happen. If the older people are more vulnerable, other people should be wearing masks to make sure that they don't get the, the, uh, infection. So I think that, of course, it's a matter of, uh, people feeling comfortable. People have the right if they, if they can't wear them. So all of those things are true, but I think we really need to keep that in focus. That we, we were doing really, really well early on. And I understand, I get it all the time. I know Supervisor Bone references the many calls. I don't think any day goes by that I don't get messages, calls, et cetera, from people. We're really trying to figure out how to go forward. But the bottom line here is if we stay the course, um, I feel, you know, it, yeah, it might be an, uh, an imposition to wear a mask in some instances, but uh, just think of the people that have to wear them all day long because they come in contact with all different kinds of people. And, you know, people, uh, uh, someone at a checkout counter, um, got to wear a mask all day long because people are going in and out. So they'll, I feel really badly for them and yet they do it. And I know that employees really feel like they need to. So let's just kind of keep a steady mind on that. And I do hear and I, I echo, the people do need a certain level of certainty. So whenever we can give clear guidance on when something might be coming available or how we're going to do it, we'll try and push it out even more. And I do want to echo also that, um, if you have uh, testing capacity going on in Southern Humboldt, I'd love to hear about it, Dr. Frank, if I can spread the word as well. So is, thank you so much. And, uh, any other, um, comments on this item before we move on? Dr. Frankovich.
Yeah, just in closing, I was going to mention, you know, again, I, I've sort of heard this idea echoed, um, certainly among callers about, you know, sort of being locked down or, or things not open. And I do want to point out that, you know, really, you know, a vast number of our sectors, I mean, right now, I think about almost the only thing that we have hanging out there that there's guidance available for, um, that we haven't opened or aren't opening this week, are fitness centers and bars. You know, the, the, these other sectors are all sectors that we have opened. Um, I think, um, in spite of that, and in spite of the fact that those folks, um, you know, putting in their plans are being approved, we have a fair number of businesses, quite a lot in fact, who have chosen not to open yet. Um, and that is, you know, perfectly, you know, within their right to do that, but that is not something that we are, um, forcing at this time. So I do want to tell people that, um, we, you know, as much as we want people to be cautious, we want to have all these safety measures in place so that they can, um, shop in their community. They can go out to eat. They can support our local businesses. But, you know, increasingly, our community in terms of being able to operate is looking more like it used to, at least from a business standpoint, um, at least from a permissive standpoint. So sometimes I think it's hard to see, um, progress. Um, and I do think it's important for people to recognize that, that, you know, whether it's restaurants or, you know, essentially all retail, um, you know, campgrounds, salons, soon personal services, all those things are going to be open and options available. And they'll actually be safer than they would otherwise have been because of all the measures that, you know, the EOC and others are taking as well as the, the big weight that those business owners and such are taking on to try and operate safely. Um, and I really appreciate that effort on their, um, on their part. So we're getting there. It's never going to be fast enough.
Thank you, Dr. Frankovich, and, uh, thank you very much for all your work. And thank you to everybody involved, the people at the, Emergency Operations Center, the Joint Information Center, um, everybody, the people on the front lines and, uh, you know, it really is good news that we haven't had a surge yet. And so hopefully that's the way it's going to go. Uh, we've had two fairly significant Memorial Day weekend and, uh, and then we've had protests and we really haven't seen any kind of surge. So, uh, let's keep our fingers crossed and do the best we can to move forward in a positive way. All right. Well, thank you everybody very much. Uh, when we started off doing these updates, we thought maybe they'd last a half an hour. We've been doing this now for over an hour and a half.
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of interest and thank you for your time. And we'll keep doing these updates so that people can stay informed. Really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So we will go now to the next part of the agenda, but first I did, um, neglect to ask the CIO Nielsen if there were any modifications to the agenda. So I would ask you that now, CIO Nielsen.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. I guess, uh, item L2 needs to be pulled from closed session.
Okay, L2. Thank you very much. Uh, any comments on closed session or, excuse me, on the, on the consent calendar or a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar minus, what was it, L11? Is that what I heard?
L2.
L2, sorry, L2, L2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, and the, uh, Council Billingsley.
Just to clarify, item L2 is a closed session item and it's not on the consent calendar.
I apologize for that. So I move that we, uh, approve the consent calendar and we'll worry about L2 later.
Thank you, um, Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bass.
Yeah, I took his message. I took his motion as being, you know, moved to approve the consent calendar and the modification of pulling L2. So however you want to do it, it sounds good. Just make sure it's clear so that, uh, you want to counsel.
Yeah, we're, we're good. We're very good. So is there any public comment on, uh, consent calendar?
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do have public comment.
Oh, okay. Let's go to our first caller, welcome caller.
Still, well, I'm, I'm glad your county council caught that L2, that things on consent start with a C, I think, and L is after C. So anyway, good catch, I guess. Um, I wish to comment on C9. It says, approve, approve an appropriation trend, C9 consent calendar. Approve an appropriation transfer of 7,800,000 and some change from fund with a number, Child Welfare Services Fund to Social Administration Fund. And, and according to discussion in here on your staff report, it says at the beginning of fiscal year 2019, 2020, technical difficulties impacted the county's payroll system. Due to some technical difficulty, some, so you're basically doing something that you knew about at the beginning of the, which is about a year ago now. And, and why is this having to be transferred now? Why wasn't this caught? Something is wrong with your accounting process as in procedures. If this wasn't taken care of right away with the staff. I, I, I just can't understand why we have all these retroactive things and things way after the fact being transferred around. And I'm not going to try and fathom the total of this, but, uh, when you find a mistake, maybe it's best to correct it right away. Uh, that seems to be costing us a lot in litigation and things of that nature. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on consent calendar, C9.
Thank you Kent. Uh, Ryan, is there any further comment on the consent calendar?
Hello, Thomas Mulder here. I'm calling, commenting on C12, the Exella program. I'm just a little confused in the staff report. It says to, uh, it's brought before by the Planning and Building Department, but then it says to authorize DHHS to enter into the agreement and then recommendations. It's a little confusing there. Maybe DHHS uses it as well, but I'm just curious because Exella is the same platform that the state uses for cannabis licensing. Is there any kind of refund or money given back from the state via the state licensing fees for cannabis to the county for, because the county needs to have a platform to integrate with, uh, the state of California with, uh, for cannabis permitting and licensing. Because that's, I mean, I'm looking at it, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next five years. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Um, any further comment on this item?
That concludes public comment for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bone?
Well, on C2, I want to thank Sabell and Yana with everything going on in our world and everything else. These recent rains and the fire fuel out in the woods, I want to, I want to really applaud those two for not losing the sight of what's going to happen in September, October and November. And hopefully by doing, signing on with AB 3071 and some of this fire preparedness, I, I don't think, I, I don't want what's happened in past in other areas. So I really appreciate them with keeping their eye on the ball and, and bringing this stuff forward and bringing it to me and to us more, more explicitly and looking out for everybody in our rural part of the county. And local part of the county, our dangers that, uh, looming. And the headline would be screaming right now, we're in fire danger starting right away because there's fires already. But I really want to call on those two and, and, and really highlight what they do for us on a rate, a daily basis.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Um, I note that, uh, Director Ford is, uh, in the call, uh, uh, on the panel. Would you care to address that issue of the environmental health and Exella? Director Ford, please.
Sure, absolutely. So environmental health, there's two things going on here. Number one, for environmental health, they have their own permitting process and program that they use to issue permits for septic systems and wells. Traditionally, that has been done as part of the on-track system, which is being discontinued. Exella does offer a module that addresses the environmental health module, and so that's what's being added there. And then in addition to that, we are extending our contract with Exella to continue our, uh, use of their services for our permitting software. We came to the decision to use Exella independently of the state. There is no relationship between the state, uh, permitting of cannabis and the county use of Exella. We get no kickbacks or anything. They get no kickbacks. There is no monetary relationship there.
Thank you, Director Ford. Uh, with that, I'll go to Ryan for a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
Yes, Chair Fennel, we'll start with Supervisor Bone.
It usually comes down on, sorry.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron? Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five oh.
Thank you, Ryan. And that will bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And, um, just as everybody is public comment on non-agenda items. And just as everybody, I know that probably some of our regular callers will be aware that on every item like this, if you want to comment, you can call the number on the screen and then press star nine to get into the queue. So Ryan, do we have any comments on non-agenda items?
Sure, we do.
Thank you. Let's go to the first caller.
Still, Ken Swawski, frequent public commenter. I received, I received something that was forwarded to me. I think it's authentic, but I'm going to read it in the record. And if not, your auditor controller can let me know. I tried to reach her, but didn't. It states from Karen Paz Dominguez, apparently, from our elected, elected auditor controller, Karen Paz Dominguez. The chair of the Board of Supervisors denied me the opportunity to speak during a period in which she asked if any department heads had anything to say. And I guess this is relative to yesterday's meeting because I saw that happen. Director Ford's mic was apparently accidentally unmuted, and she offered him the floor. He did not comment. I then raised my hand, and she laughed as she said no to me. I am the public elected watchdog of public funds who is required to attend budget meeting hearings to bribe information government code two nine oh eight three, and she denied me the mic. I had benefit of the mic second time. But anyway, I don't know what your policies and procedures are. Well, here's what I was going to say. Number one, the county does not have a contingency fund. The county doesn't even restrict its fund balance by any of its obligations. There is a fund called General Reserve with four million dollars in it. This is what they keep using as a funding source for millions of dollars worth of expenditures. Never mind that other funds are negative by ten, twenty, or thirty million dollars. Apparently, four million is enough to cover it all. Two, all the fund estimates the board is provided are generated in Excel by staff who made up their own fund balance formula. They are not based upon any actual activity on the general ledger. And my comment is here, those need to be right spot on exact. Number three, the county is not budgeting for the loans that it issues to sheriff employees. It is not tracking these. We do not have an accurate accounting for all the loans that have been issued, thus potentially gifting public funds. Number four, the county is not budgeting for significant late fees incurred by payroll for late reporting to CalPur from January two thousand nineteen to January twenty twenty. The county paid over a hundred and thirty thousand in late fees out of retirement fund. This was done outside of the purview of the A C office. I will be correcting this before the year is over. This is information the public needs to know. It's important that the board needs to know so they can do something to stop it. I guess it's just easier to silence the auditor controller and keep heads in the sand. It says sent by my iPhone, and it's addressed Karen D with an initial up top. So, you know, this is a major concern to me. There seems to be an ongoing attitude or something to not want to listen to the auditor controller. And this all ties back to what I refer to Amy Gate. You, you need to get something changed here. You need to get some people who can work together. It's time for a change at the top of the helm there. It's time for us to go ahead and get somebody to run the county here with you folks that can do this and follow the policies and procedures that are required. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Do we have any further public on items, comment on items not on the agenda?
Hello again, this is Thomas Mulder. I'm, I'm not going to go into detail. I did see that auditor controller thing on Facebook last night. That was kind of concerning. I'm not going to waste time on that. I did, I have been concerned as I'm watching the agendas. I haven't seen an update from the Canada, the Board of Supervisors Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee. I keep hearing about it. I've been challenged with work and stuff like that. So I haven't been able to email any things that I would like to see, you know, the five hundred and two hundred square foot thing. I know there was someone in the community that was trying to do something on the elections, but they kind of got out of stride with going above building code and stuff like that. So it was denied by county council. So it'd be nice to see something like that. It's planting season. It's already passed. I would say thank you for adding the capabilities of Zoom for the Project Charles Committee. It was really nice for the committee, committee to be able to meet a couple of times via Zoom. So I thank the county for providing that. And I'm going to circle back to youth sports. Once again, I'm seeing, I saw my, my questions were avoided and dodged by the health officer. Right now, with what's taking place, youth sports and the youth of our community are being told they are less important than bringing people from outside our county into our county. So I'm going to say again, I heard a commenter say something about after seven days, the Board of Supervisors has to do something. So if the Board of Supervisors does have the authority to supersede what the health officer said, I think you need to really think about the future generation of our community and, and take control of this situation. If we only have two active cases, I think we really, really need to look at that. And as Rex said, let the horses run. I, I think that's a good terminology. Let these kids open up playgrounds. Let them have fun, please. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Any further comments on items not on the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to speak on behalf of Black Humboldt and Argentine celebration.
Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Monique Harper Devere. And basically, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. It dates back to eighteen sixty-five, where on June nineteenth, the Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Gangster, Gangler, excuse me, landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. Note that this was two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official on January first, eighteen sixty-three. So this date is very important for Southern slaves that were held captive past this January first date. Nowadays, we see Juneteenth celebrations being widely celebrated amongst the Black community in a big, large, extravagant way. This year, Black Humboldt and the Eureka chapter of the N double A C P have created an all-day, community-wide event celebrating freedom, diversity, and community. The event features local Black, Indigenous, and P O C vendors, workshop facilitators, music, and performances. This holiday is very important and empowering for the Black and Brown communities all over the United States, but especially for Humboldt County, as our Black community makes up a minuscule fraction of the population that is often oppressed as a result of these numbers. Black history is a part of the United States' history, even the parts that make people uncomfortable. It is important to celebrate and teach correct Black history as we create safe spaces and inclusion for Black, Indigenous, and P O C communities in Humboldt County. With all the current racially fueled tragedies affecting Black, Indigenous, and P O C communities, I think it's extremely important that we continue to celebrate and honor Black lives and Black joy and recognize Juneteenth as a national holiday. So on Friday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty, at noon, we will be hosting virtual space for a Juneteenth event. The goals of the event are to create safe, inclusive spaces to celebrate and educate on the history of Juneteenth, to unite the community with Black joy while respecting social distancing rules, to create safe spaces to host conversations around race, equity, white supremacy, and systematic oppression, to highlight our Black, Indigenous, and P O C businesses, community members, artists, and educators in Humboldt County, and to fundraise for the Black, Indigenous, and P O C owned business sector here in Humboldt County. We are going to host this event on Zoom. So if you want to participate on that platform, head to our website, www-blackhumboldt.com, and check out our Juneteenth page. But otherwise, you can join us on Facebook Live at Black Humboldt, across the radio at ninety-eight point seven FM, as well as on K MUD, ninety-one point one FM. And then also on our local Humboldt Channel eleven, you'll be able to tune in as well. And we're just really hoping to, the community will use this opportunity to educate themselves and to further show their solidarity for the Black and Brown bodies that live in Humboldt County, as well as support the Black and Brown businesses.
Thank you very much. Any further comment on items not on the agenda?
Chair Fennel, that concludes public comment on non-agenda items.
Through the, through the chair.
Yes, Supervisor Wilson.
I just wanted to thank Monique for her comments related to Juneteenth. There had been an effort to have a Juneteenth proclamation on this agenda before, but things are complicated in these times. And so we will have that on our next agenda for, for next week. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that and, and, and again, encourage people to educate themselves about these important issues and, and offer that Friday's events are something that should be encouraged for folks to, to view and to participate in. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Wilson. Any further comments from the board? I actually want to comment on the item that Ken Swawski wrote, brought up regarding yesterday's meeting. I want to make it very clear that I'm disappointed that this item is just wandering around on Facebook when the fact of the matter is that the auditor controller spoke freely and at length in their first section of the budget hearings. The evening session was a continuation of that. And at the time that she raised her hand, it was an opportunity for other department heads to speak. That's what I made clear. And what I also made clear at that time was that she could actually engage with the board in discussions if she did, if she wants to at that point. I like give her the benefit of the doubt. Maybe she didn't understand that, but I would like to make that clear. Thank you very much. And that will take us to our next item on the agenda. And this is from the County Administrative Office. It's regarding the Consumer Price Index increases on cannabis tax. Oh, actually, that reminds me, I want to make one other comment regarding public comment. There was an item about the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, and that item regarding personal growing, personal use cannabis will be coming up very shortly in the, on a, very shortly on this board meeting. So again, sorry, going back to item H one, the County Administrative Office, the Consumer Price Index Increase on Cannabis Excise Tax Bills. C A O Nielsen.
Chair Fennel, I will turn this over to Assistant County Administrative Officer Alicia Hayes, who will deliver the staff report on the Consumer Price Index Increase on Cannabis Excise Tax Bills. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O Nielsen, and hello, Chair Fennel, members of the board. I came before your board on March third to consider a stay on the Consumer Price Index, also known as C P I increase for the twenty twenty cannabis excise tax bills. A stay on the C P I would provide tax relief and planning capabilities for those cannabis business owners and farmers who are struggling to establish sustainable business models. Your board asked staff to return with four options. The first option was to take no action at all, and this would have no financial impact to the county. The second option is to place a stay on the twenty twenty C P I that's due in twenty twenty-one. This would reduce the cannabis excise tax revenues by approximately seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars annually. The third option is to place a stay on the twenty twenty C P I and incorporate a credit for the twenty nineteen C P I that has already been paid. This would reduce revenues by approximately one point five million, with seven hundred and eighty-one thousand of that being an ongoing impact. Finally, the fourth option is to refund the two thousand nineteen C P I while still applying the C P I moving forward. This would reduce revenues one time by an estimated seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The regional area of San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward is utilized in calculating the C P I, as this is the region in closest proximity to Hummel County. This is also the same region utilized by our purchasing department. Some cultivators have expressed an opinion that utilizing the C P I for the Bay Area is not an appropriate comparison. Your board could further direct staff to utilize the West Region or the nationwide region. I would also like to note that these estimations included in today's board report were developed using the current C P I rate of four percent. Given the current economic conditions of the state and the nation as a result of COVID, the twenty twenty C P I rate will be, is, it's highly likely that it will be less than the rate experienced in two thousand nineteen, reducing some of the impacts that are discussed in today's report. With that, I'll conclude the staff report and answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you, Alicia. Any questions from the board on this item? Okay, and I will just go to a public comment on this item and then bring it back to the board after that. Ryan, do we have any public comment on this item? And again, I will remind people that if they're watching, they can call the numbers on the screen and then press star nine to get into queue to speak. Ryan, do we have any public comment at this point on the C P I?
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do.
Okay, great. Let's go with the first caller, please.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, Ross.
Great, thank you. Thank you, board, for the opportunity to comment on the item and also for considering some of the situations surrounding the C P I increase. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. I think this is a timely time for this conversation for a couple reasons, some of which staff mentioned. Just to frame this issue, you know, we're talking about an inflation adjusted increase for cannabis taxes. And this is happening in a time when all businesses are obviously impacted by the situation surrounding COVID, but cannabis businesses in particular are not just impacted, but have also seen increases in our tax rate, which is already quite high over the past year. So we've seen increases to the state tax, both the cultivation tax and the wholesale markup rate early in twenty twenty. And we're also obviously looking at this, this potential, you know, C P I increase here today. I think a second important sort of framing issue, as staff mentioned, is that we are no longer in an inflationary period. Because of COVID, we're actually seeing historic deflation. And so I think that, that seems important when talking about this issue of inflation adjusted tax increase that we're actually not seeing inflation because of what's going on in the world. So with that in mind, I think we have two positions we kind of communicate to y'all in the letter consent. The first is, as staff mentioned, there's this issue around, is two percent the nationwide C P I increase rate or four percent the Bay Area rate, appropriate rate to increase by inflation? And I think we feel the nationwide rate is not just appropriate, given that we're not in the Bay Area, but it's also, in our opinion, Measure S says. Measure S uses language about the Consumer Price Index for, quote, all urban consumers, which I think pretty clearly seems to suggest that the inflation rate could be about two percent or less nationwide rate and not the four percent national rate. So would encourage the board to take that into consideration. To the second point about, you know, a credit for previous year's C P I increases and a stay on this year's C P I increase, we do support that policy. I think the major challenge that we're seeing right now among particularly our small and independent cultivators is a cash flow issue. I think there's a lot of optimism about, about the ability for folks to succeed over the long term, especially as we start to see access to banking, access to national markets. There's a lot of opportunity there. But in the short term, there's a lot of cash flow challenges, given all of the taxes and regulatory considerations. And so a stay on C P I increase, I think, would be a major help, especially considering, you know, as mentioned, we're not seeing inflation right now. We're seeing deflation, and that historically, we've been seeing inflation at that four percent rate rather than the two percent rate, which is more consistent with the way Measure S is worded. So appreciate your time on this issue, and thanks so much.
Thank you, Ross. Do we have any further comment on this item?
Still, Ken Swawski, I would like to comment. Obviously, as most people know, I wrote the opposition to Measure S. And I'm also going to suggest that the prior speaker was quite correct in what they were stating, especially with the small growers. You know, HUMMAP has a general policy, I believe, that the, that the small growers have been disproportionately affected by the taxing, will be disproportionately affected by the, by the increases if you, if you go ahead and move forward with those. So I don't support those. I support rolling that back. And to me, this tax, especially in the small growers, is a regressive tax. The tax that taxes those small growers that can at least afford to do the permitting to get where they are, to stay in business. So if you're going to do any separation, I would go ahead and put your tax on somebody that's, I don't know what small. So if you're going to do any separation, I would go ahead and put your tax on somebody that's, I don't know what small is. You have a hard time, maybe one acre or larger, if you're going to do it. They can absorb it better than the smaller growers, I believe. At least they claim they're making that kind of money. That's what I've heard out there. So again, I, I do question that, and you know, and then yesterday I also questioned how that tax is all being spent. And I do, I do, I'm going to again request this and how that tax is being spent. It goes in the general fund, but unfortunately, on June 3, 2014, Amy Nielsen used the term, $400,000 was swallowed up by per, or health insurance cost. We don't know how the money is being spent. We'd like transparency on this. And so if it is wound down, which sounds like it will be wound down in its entirety eventually, you'll know what to cut back. So appreciate you not moving forward with any increases on these people at this time. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Any further comments on this item?
Hello, Thomas Mulder. Again, I'm going to piggyback and concur with everything Ross spoke about as far as the tax rate and the CPI rate. Another thing that was brought forward to me by someone I spoke with today was an idea of the CPI should be halted altogether until cannabis is federally recognized because cannabis is not allowed the same benefits of other businesses as to say we cannot get loans and stuff like that because of the COVID crisis right now. We are not able to do that. We don't have access to proper banking. We don't have access to a lot of things at other businesses, so it's actually disproportionate to lump cannabis into an index that lumps all businesses that are allowed those banking protections and loan protections. We can't even get regular real estate loans on our farms that have state licenses because it's federally illegal. So why speak to you from inside a greenhouse that's federally legal, that your county recognizes that something we're allowing to do? I ask you to say all CPI increases until it's federally legal and we have access to banking. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. So, oops, three minutes exactly. Any further comments on items, not on the, sorry, on the CPI?
Chair Fennel, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. So I'll bring it back to the board and invite any comments or discussions or questions for staff. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As with any business, it's important to understand, you know, how, how costs affect sales and viability of that, that business and/or industry. And so I do recognize that if we were to discontinue or credit the CPI, that, that is some lost revenue to the county. But I would agree with the commenters, from what I'm hearing out in the community, there is absolutely a serious cash flow issue for many of the permitted farmers. And it's much like trying to make a decision about, do you pay the PG&E bill, or put gas in the car, or put food on the table? In many cases, that's what's going on. Folks are trying to decide, do they pay their state taxes, pay their consultant fees to get their permits finalized, or do they pay their CPI or their property taxes? So what would be helpful to me, and I think the rest of the board, would be to understand where is this industry at, at least in some thumbnail sketches? So I would like to ask Planning Director John Ford, if he could give us a sense of what we're seeing out there in regards to delinquent taxes from 17, 18, or even 19, and how many interim permit holders were there that are now not going forward? You know, I hear it's in the hundreds. So if Director Ford could give us some information, maybe we could understand better the ramifications of this decision. Thank you.
Welcome, Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. So to respond to Supervisor Madron's comment question there, of the 530 cultivation sites that we have approved, their actual permits, there are 45 that are delinquent in paying their taxes for 2017 and 2018. We do not have 2019 numbers because those are still coming in right now. In terms of extensions of interim permits, we did not extend into 2020 approximately 270 interim permits because they were delinquent in their payment of 2017 and/or 2018 taxes. That number is now down somewhere around 200. I don't have a precise number, but somewhere between 50 and 70 IP or applicants once again hold IPs because they paid their taxes. And, but there still are about 200 that have not received an extension of their IP because, or their interim permit because of non-payment of taxes. Be happy to answer any questions on those numbers.
Thank you, Director Ford. Any further comment or discussion, questions? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to respond to the comment related to these taxes and the federal nexus. I mean, these are local taxes spent locally on local services. So I think, I don't see a federal nexus necessarily in that regard. Also, I mean, what we're talking about is 2% to 4%, and yeah, that's part of the discussion about increase in what exists now. We're not talking about people not paying taxes. So as an overall, from, from an overall perspective, I mean, I get incrementalism in terms of the cost of doing business, but in a percent of the cost of doing business for an individual farmer, you know, this is, this shouldn't be the biggest chunk. I mean, the biggest chunk is going to come from increases, well, and in all of the other inflationary issues that we as a county are also facing in terms of, in terms of providing services. So it's one of those, it's one of those things where we all rise and fall together in that, in that regard. So from, from my perspective, I, I do think it's important that, that, I mean, I would prefer that we maintain CPI moving forward and work even harder to provide better services for that, for that, for the value. It's, we're going to have a, if we do this today, or if we reduce or remove CPI today, we're just going to have to have this discussion over and over again. And where, you know, what other businesses are going to ask for CPI reductions for all kinds of other services that we do? It's just one of those things. I, I, I'm more concerned, well, I mean, I have lots of concerns, but a concern I would have is consistency amongst across the sectors. And so from my perspective, I think keeping CPI is reasonable, but I'm open for that, you know, more of that discussion.
Supervisor Paul?
Well, I see one of the requests is to look at how we do our CPI, because a 4% CPI compounds to doubling our tax in 10 years. So, and hopefully, four years into this, some of these guys are actually becoming pretty astute businesspeople, realize that there's a, you know, a job to do. I know some of the IP permits is that, and I'm sure you guys have all dealt with them. Some of them have just found out they can't make their site legal too. I mean, it's just they, they're, they're having a hard time getting about to their square footage to make it feasible. So I know that, that's an issue they deal with. But I mean, I always, I always cringe when we talk about San Francisco IP because I do see their rents have dropped 9.7% in the last year. But I mean, when you talk about, you know, some of the areas down in the Bay Area are the, there's three that are in the most expensive places to live in the US state, and we're using it for a CPI, and I don't see, you know, my, where I live and everything else being in the most expensive area and live. So I think that's, that's something, we look at that 4% CPI as revisiting the CPI. Even HCGA is not asking for a complete, let's not do it, but they're asking us to look at the CPI. And I think that's, we owe that to any business. And I, and I know that's taking tax dollars away in an area where we're in a world hurt right now. So I, I'm fully aware of that too, but I just thought I'd throw that out there that I'm, I'll be, I'll be like sitting on the fence with Mike. I'm, I'm open to anything.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, along the same lines, it's like I'm, I do have concerns about, you know, what we're basing it on. I'm really, at this point, not interested in offering credits or refunds. I know Supervisor Madron mentioned, you know, serious cash flow issues that a lot of folks are having, and the county's having a serious cash flow issue. So I'm not saying I totally say no, maybe there's a good argument that can be had, but I do think looking at the CPI and what we base it on, or perhaps, you know, keeping it the same, whatever, I think that makes sense. I just, I don't know if anyone else was interested in, in, I think, because we heard in the staff report, I think, something about crediting and refunding, and I just, I'm less interested in that part.
Thank you. I think the interesting part of the input that we've had regarding the CPI was for it to go nationwide, and yet this is not with the, with the nationwide index, even though this is not federally legal. However, the West Region is over one percentage point less. In other words, the SF Oakland Hayward CPI is 4%, and the West Region is 2.9%. That kind of resonates for me in terms of what, what's a better fit for Humboldt County. And I do know that when we, we discussed this several months ago, we did talk about, I can't remember if we were going to credit 2019 or if we were going to give a break in 2020. I think we were going to leave 2019 alone and give a break on 2020. So I'd like a little bit more discussion on that and what it would mean for, for the bottom line. If you've got, with the 4% CPI, if you have, let's see, I, I think it's if you have four, if you have 1,000 square feet, that would be $40, and 10,000 square feet would be 400. That be correct? If we're at 4%? And I think that it was mentioned earlier that this does seem to affect the smaller growers more because that's what we heard from earlier on when there was a request to give some break to, to the people who are paying Measure S taxes. So I'd just like to throw those things out, kind of a middle ground on the CPI and the potential also to not, to either let 2019 go forward into the break in 2020 or vice versa, but not do both. I know that HCGA would like both, but I, I know that Supervisor Bass is saying she's not interested in any break in that regard, so want to recognize that too.
Supervisor Bass? I would just say, I think if we, you know, I mean, when you look at adjusting the CPA, CPI by not moving it up is considered a break as well. I don't mind that we do CPI. I'm concerned about any actual, you know, clear credits or refunds. That just, I need to know more. That's what I want to do.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Got that. Any further comment or discussion of this item? Supervisor Madron?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we adjust our CPI to be the nation rate, starting with the 2020 tax bill and thereafter.
Superintendent Billingsley?
Thank you, Chair. If I just may inject a comment. That the county uses, so I don't know that we necessarily want to change that, but I suggest that perhaps what you may want to do is stay a portion of the CPI increase that would equate to one of the other areas and not change what actual formulation we're using. You could say we would like to stay 2% of the CPI, which would come out to a 2% adjustment, but that is the CPI adjustment that the county uses.
Okay, well, with that, I would reform my motion to provide a 2% credit to future CPI rates, starting with 2020. Does that work?
I think what I was hearing, and maybe I'll let counsel clarify, but, but he was basically saying is that as, as a formula, it would be 2% of the CPI, rather than saying, is, am I correct in that? As Counsel Billingsley?
I believe what Supervisor Madron, he would like the CPI for 2020 to be 2%. And as that's under what's authorized, the board could, could stay the additional above 2% and just charge 2%. I don't know if you want to do that going forward, because there may be a time when subtracting 2% may be a zero or negative balance when we move into a deflationary period. The, the other issue with, with changing which area we look at is, right now, the Bay Area happens to be higher. If we switch to an area, using a CPI, we haven't traditionally done that, that may reverse.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I guess we'll just have some more discussion here. If the county, what you're saying, Counsel Billingsley, is that the county uses the CPI rate for the Bay Area for all of its business. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes. And that's what's traditionally been done with Measure S.
All right, so it seems to me that that's more of a larger fundamental issue that probably many businesses would suggest that maybe that's inappropriate to be tied to the Bay Area for our CPI. But of course, we didn't agendize the item that way, so I can't really go there today. So I'm just going to back off from that motion and see what kind of discussion the board would like to have.
Well, maybe let me ask CIO Nielsen if you have a recollection of what we were discussing. There were, there were, one item was to place a stay on 2020 due in 2021. That is, in other words, not charge a CPI at all in the 2020, or to incorporate a credit for 2019. And I believe in the discussion, the thought was that it, it would be more appropriate to place a stay on 2020 than do a credit for 2019. And is that what you remember from our discussion? I just, I'm sorry I didn't go back and look at that.
Chair Fennel, I, I would just like to point out that the CPI that the county uses is increasing by 1.1% for 2020, so it's not a 4% increase for the next excise tax bill round. Your board has about four options related to this. You could, one, take no action. Two, you could place a stay on the 2020 CPI due in 2021. Third, you could place a stay on the 2020 CPI and incorporate a credit for the 2019 CPI that's been paid. And the fourth option is you could refund the 2019 CPI while still applying the CPI moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe the last option might be more feasible.
Okay. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you're saying the refund option is more reasonable than, I mean, just tell me why, so I can understand versus like putting a stay on, you know, this year?
Well, if I might remind us, I think when we were talking about refunding, it was going to be applied as a credit, is what I remember, but I could be wrong about that.
Just know where it's going, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. CIO Nielsen? I'm sorry.
Applying a credit would be a much easier way to apply a credit to a tax bill than actually, I believe, issuing a refund.
Yeah. Supervisor Bone?
So we're looking at option four. Option four. So can I make a motion that we take option four, staff option number four, refunding by way of credit 2019 CPI while still applying CPI moving forward?
Now, but a second on that motion? Okay.
I'll second it. On it, since no one else.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Bass. So, you know, that, that I would point out, that, that being the case, the, the credit for 2019, what was the CPI in 2019? That was 4%, correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Fennel.
So there's an advantage there for the industry, and that it's a, a credit on a CPI that was 4%, and then moving forward with a CPI that currently for 2020 would be 1.1%. So that's, that seems pretty reasonable. Andy, Supervisor Wilson?
I mean, it's still a hit to the county of three quarters of a million dollars. So I'm not, it's not something to sneeze at here, at a time when we are really in a, in a, in a space, and this is a credit to what's already been paid. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, personally, I, I think I really would prefer the no action option, and moving forward with the 1.1% CPI as we're moving forward. I think looking backwards in time is probably not the best way to go in this. And also, you know, we've got over, it, it appears over 90% of, of our, of our, you know, permities are paying their taxes on this. And, and I would say that, yeah, it's true that some sites have been determined to be unpermit, permissible. I mean, we knew that from the beginning. We knew that there would be locations that just didn't have the physical and environmental parameters to, to function, and yet we moved forward with a lot of interim permits to help people figure out if that, you know, every possible way they could get to that space, and some of them didn't, didn't pan out. I, I get that. And that's, that's hard for us. But I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm kind of in the mode of the, of the no action option, looking at the, looking at what the options that were, you know, put into the staff report.
Okay. Supervisor Bass?
I can ask through the chair a question of Supervisor Wilson. Were you saying that no action option, but then you suggested moving forward at the, the, at the 1.1 CPI moving forward? So I, I just wanted to say that, see if that's what you were still.
Yeah, well, I think that's what happens in no action. It's automatic. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm not correct on that, we're not approving, I mean, CPI is part of, I think, as I understand it, is, is part of how this moves forward on an annual basis, as per the measure that was approved by the voters. And so no action, from my perspective, is to move forward with how things are, you know, what the parameter set in the measure. And we have options of dialing those things back, which is what we're talking about. But if we don't do that, then I would say that the CPI will be applied. I, I think that's my understanding, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's a correct understanding.
So the situation is this, that this came to our attention because the CPI was 4%. A lot of people didn't expect, or didn't anticipate it, didn't understand that there would be CPI implied. We got a lot of requests to relieve some people who are paying out a lot in other expenses around establishing their businesses. Now, with time going forward, the economy in a very different direction than it was last year, the CPI will be 1.1% as forecast for 2020. So it seems like we're in a different position right now. Everybody is. And so the CPI won't be as much. So you're right, Supervisor Wilson, that, that is, that, that it will be much less next time around. Let's put it that way. But it still leaves the question, the, the request for relief that people gave us when it was 4%, and can we help them that way? Supervisor Bass?
Given the conversation, I think I'll remove my second from the motion that's on the floor, because I think we're kind of having some more information that I think is important, at least is to me. I think that we do have to keep sight of the 750,000 and find a way to work around it, and something that can help them, but also not totally impact the county to such a large extent, so.
And I'm fine pulling the motion. I'm just trying to get the ball rolling here, get the, get the discussion going. I'm fully aware of what we're going in the hole on, so I would love to have an answer to that, but I, we tried this morning, and we don't know where, we, we still don't know where we're going to be in four months, it sounds like.
Supervisor Wilson?
There's a question for CIO. The CPI is, in where it gets determined, and there's some discussion here about whether it's the Bay Area, the west of the United States, the entire United States, is that defined in the ordinance, or in the, in the language of, of what was approved by the voters? And if not, I, I believe there is a, at least there's a state, California State CPI as well. I mean, and does, in terms of the legal market for cannabis, it is supposed to be in the state, confined to the state, although I would say that CPI is really supposed to be about expenses related to a locale. And so the accuracy of CPI relative to Bay Area for us, I mean, we may actually have a relative CPI on the ground that's actually higher than the Bay Area. I, I don't, you know, I'm not the, I don't, I don't make those calculations. But currently, when the county uses CPI for all its business in general, we're using the Bay Area ones, we're being consistent. Is that what I'm hearing from you? And?
Through the chair, the purchasing team uses the Bay Area's CPI. And in your tax ordinance, it does reference CPI for all urban consumers, published by the United States Government Bureau of Labor Statistics. It wasn't particularly specific in the ordinance, but it is there.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. So does, is there a fundamental difference that we know of right off the top of our heads between California as a state versus the Bay Area in terms of CPI?
Is there a fundamental difference between California State and the Bay Area? I, I would have to research that, quite frankly. We choose the Bay Area because they are, quite frankly, a, a neighbor, and they do impact our economy. So if your board wants to make a change to the CPI, that is your board's policy decision to do so.
Through the chair, I, I don't have any, I, I'm just, personally, I'm still, I'm ready to move forward with no action. Do I, do we need a, do we need a, a motion to move forward with no action? Or is no action, no action?
Or discretion? Uh, Council Billingsley?
Yes, Chair. In response to Supervisor Will, if the board takes no action, the CPI will happen automatically. Of course, your board could also vote and decide to take no action.
Up, through the chair, I'll reserve to have other communications about CPI as we move forward at another time, and we can, we can do that, but not today. I don't think we need to parse locations in terms of the state versus the Bay Area. I just think that that's, it won't be, it's not going to be a functional discussion, discussion today.
You know, it occurs to me that even with the budget in general, we're calling our budget a placeholder, because we really are not clear on, on, on how we're going to be impacted. And we're going to be looking at that in September. Would there be any support for just continuing this to a later date, and also getting a little bit more solid information on the CPI situation with regard to a, a particular business, rather than across the board, for instance?
Through, through the chair, I, in that discussion, I don't think I really want to reserve another day to discuss this, unless I am, you know, have, have better understand, I mean, it can be brought back as a new agenda item if someone wants to do that. But I'm not really believing there's going to be a significant difference between these CPIs. I don't have, I don't personally have any interest in date certain time to bring this back. We have a lot on our agenda, and things are going to get even more, there's going to be more stuff that we have to deal with, and I'm not sure this is like the highest of priorities, in terms of just the finagling of a local versus state CPI. If it is a big difference, and someone wants to bring it back for a discussion, I think that's fine, but I don't personally want to put a date certain for that right now.
Okay. Unless I hear any further comment, I'm going to end this discussion, and record that there was no action on this item. And did I see your hand up, Supervisor Madron? No, just, no, okay. All right. Silence. Okay, so there's no action on this item, and we will move to the next item, which comes to us from Public Works, and this is Introduction of an Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 3, Division 3 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code relating to Airport Approach Zone Building Height Regulations. And I will go to Cody, Director Cody Rogat.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. The item before you today has been under development for quite a while with extensive work from Deputy Director Bronckel in Public Works. The primary objectives of bringing this before you today is to eventually streamline the process for applicants as they work with Deputy Director Bronckel and Director Ford's departments, and to update county code to match federal aviation regulations and the protected surfaces of those federal aviation regulations around our airports. And it also would update the county code that dates back to 1955. I'll let Deputy Director Bronckel take it from here through Chair Fennel.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get too far into the item, I request that County Council introduce the attached ordinance by title and waive the first reading.
Council Billingsley?
Before your board today is Introduction of an Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 3, Division 3 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code relating to Airport Approach Zone Building Height Regulations.
All right. Thank you. So as Airport Director Cody had indicated, this item has been in the works for some time. The Airport Land Use Commission has heard the item and has supported that it is consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And as such, staff is now going ahead and presenting the item to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. And I'll conclude my staff report at this point.
Thank you. Bob, any comment from the board on this? Supervisor Bone?
Shouldn't we move forward on this with staff's recommendation?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. Supervisor Bass, speech to Supervisor Wilson? Any public comment on this item?
Chair Fennel, I do not see any public comment for this item.
Thank you. With that, any further discussion? No further discussion. Let's take a roll call vote on this ordinance.
Yes. Yes, Chair Fennel. Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron? Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much, Ryan. That will bring us to another ordinance, also from Public Works. So I will go to Bob for that one.
Thank you. This ordinance is an ordinance to go ahead and codify stop signs throughout the county that are not currently codified in county code. It's a cleanup ordinance to go ahead and reflect the current as-built conditions. The stop signs were installed over the years, and it is part of a cleanup exercise that the department periodically does when we come across things that aren't quite right. With that, I would like County Council to introduce the attached ordinance by title and waive the first reading.
Before your board today is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Sections 421-1 through 421-7 relating to stop signs in the Eureka Shelter Co., Redway, and Garberville areas of Chapter 1, Division 2 of Title IV of the Humboldt County Code.
Thank you, Council Billingsley. Back to you, Mr. Bronckel.
That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Supervisor Bass and Supervisor Bone?
Like, do we approve staff recommendation?
Supervisor Bone?
Second, and with perfect, you'll know we've removed Oak and F Street, which Director, Assistant Director Bronckel, Director Mattson, we are reevaluating everything. So everything's back off the table. It's being reevaluated. I'm asking people, if you get in an accident there, make sure you report it, because we need those numbers. But Oak and F are, and the striping is off, and we're reevaluating all of Oak and F to include everybody's input, according to Director Mattson.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Any discussion of this item, this motion? Seeing none, I'll go to Ryan for a roll call vote on this ordinance.
Let's have public comment, though.
Oh, thank you. Thanks a lot. Let's have public comment on this item. Thank you.
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do have public comment for this.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for catching that. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Thank you, Rex, for remembering me. This is Katie Sharp. And, yeah, I'm not going away till I get a good answer, so it sounds like you have a good answer. What I would like to say is, is that Supervisor Fennel had asked me, advised me to call in today for the discussion, and I'm, I was disappointed to see that there was nothing for F and Oaks. I'm glad to hear why. But I would really like to reiterate that I've sent everyone a certified letter, that having RCA A come in and conduct a study of the area that's not 10 years old, and including the shift of traffic from Broadway to our area, would be the smartest thing to do. And also for the study to go forward in the budget immediately as best as possible. So I'll leave it there, because I've already explained myself and given testimony to date on that. So again, thank you, Rex, for clarifying that, and I will pass along the word to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Katie. Any further comments on this item?
Hi, this is Debbie Hart and I appreciate what, hi, I appreciate what Katie said and agree with that. And just wanted to thank you for bringing that back today. I saw that there wasn't the additional stop signs added there as we had discussed as a possibility. But I appreciate again what Katie has to offer and am in communications with her about those things. I just don't want this to fall off of the, I just don't want this to fall off the radar. It really is important that we don't lose sight of what we're trying to do here, which is get a light there. And if an interim solution is to get two more stop signs there, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any further comment on this item?
Chair Fennel, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you, Ryan. Bring it back to the board Supervisor Bone.
Well, I want to thank Katie and Debbie because they've been, they've been to the meetings they've, that we had. And there are, there are some issues we're going to have to face to get to that point. And I think that we're up to the challenge. It's not going to fall off the radar because you two won't let it. And I thank you for that. But I think as you'll notice, the, all the stop signs we did today, I think all of them are already up and running. They take quite a while to do the, the report and everything else. And, and Katie will remember, we have done a traffic study already. We did a traffic count. We decided F Street is probably the busiest two-lane road in all of Humboldt County and it has increased quite a bit. So it's, it's almost beyond the point of what RCAA can do for us. It's time for Public Works and everybody else and the CHP to write up an accident. And Katie, you've seen them, but sometimes we don't have law enforcement there all the time. We need to have the numbers, believe it or not, to get to this point and that's where we're headed. So, and I won't let it fall off the radar because I go through that intersection two or three times, Dan. I know what you guys are putting up with. So I appreciate all the neighbors on, on helping with this and, and we'll keep it going. Just, just FYI. And I appreciate the time on that.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. And I would remind Katie and Debbie that part of the reason it's not on is because we, we wanted to remove it from this other part of the original ordinance. So it's definitely going to get all the attention that it needs and as Supervisor Bone said, keep, keep pushing. So with that, if there's no further discussion of the board, I'll bring this to a roll call vote. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Bass?
Certainly.
Supervisor Madron? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes five oh.
Thank you very much. And that will bring us on to the final item actually on the agenda, which before we go into closed session, and that is from the Planning and the Building Department, the Community Development Block Grant Final Report. So hand it over to Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Good morning. Good morning, members of supervisors John Ford and Andrew Whitney. Here present this public hearing for a two thousand and sixteen CDBG grant that county received. What the public hearing allows us to do is report on how the money was spent, allows the public and the board to understand what has happened, provide any comments. And then that enables us to file our final reports to close out this, this grant. The money for this grant, it was for a micro enterprise technical assistance program. It was given to the North Coast Small Business Resource Center. The North Coast Resource Center has been operating the county's ongoing micro enterprise technical assistance program since two thousand and two. The original value of the grant was for three hundred thousand dollars. It says in the staff report that only two hundred and fifty-two and nine hundred and seventy-five dollars of that were spent. That's a little bit misleading. I'd like to clarify that a little bit. During the period of the grant, we received a loan repayment from a previous, from previous program, a previous loan that we had issued in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. In accordance with the requirements for CDBG, that money needs to be spent first. And since this was the only program we had going on at the time, it was attributed to this program. So this program actually spent a total of three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. So it exceeded the three hundred thousand dollar original loan amount because of the income that came in from the, the other project. With, with that, we've satisfied all the requirements of the grant and now just really want to make the board aware of what has been done with the money to allow us to file the final paperwork and close this grant. With that, either Mr. Whitney or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First of all, if I may, Director Ford, want to clarify that the hearing has been opened. Just get that on the record. Thank you. So any questions or comments for Director Ford or Mr. Whitney? No questions or comments from the board. We'll go to public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on the CDBG micro enterprise technical assistance final report?
I'm sure. I don't have any public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the board. Any common discussion or emotion?
I'll move that we receive the report. Thanks staff for their hard work helping all the businesses, especially our smaller businesses with these, with these micro loans. It's been, I think, successful. And so I'm hoping we see more of this. And it's going to, and what has been established in these protocols and in these programs are informing how we're responding to our current situation. And so we've been, you know, exercising those economic muscles, I guess you'd say, in the, in these programs. And I'm hoping that that exercise is going to be helpful as we move forward. So thank you so much to staff and and that's all I have.
Was that a first or a second?
That was a first.
Second, and second, with, with the only other thing I'd ask John or just in the future, I mean, mainly for the people that may be listening, all forty-seven of you. What I, what I'd like to do is, is if we could, and I don't know what the laws, but some of the success stories always be so positive because we hear thirty-two businesses, thirty-eight expanded, yada, yada. And then everybody walks away going, I wonder who that was. So I'm not saying expose them all. I'm not saying, you know, things like that. But I'm, I'm sure there's a few entrepreneurs that are pretty proud that they got that ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars and it's allowed them to do exactly what they wanted. So kind of like these incubators that we have going and everything else. So basically the ones that want to play in the band, let them be there. And the ones that don't want to, we don't have to say anything. Just, just for everybody's benefit.
Is that your second?
You had a long first.
Yeah, you, you both, you both kind of extended, but that's fine. Yes, you, you definitely said, and you said yes as well. Any further comment or input from Director Ford or Andrew? Okay, let's go to, and thank you again very much for that. I mean, that's just part of what we hang our hat on a lot here in Humboldt County is helping small businesses and just definitely helps. So with that, Ryan will go to, go on, stop laughing. Ryan, let's go for a roll call.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate that. And that finally bring us to our closed session. I think probably some members of the board would like to take a little bit of a break. But any, will ten minutes be okay? I think it will. So let's, let's introduce the items that we're going.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items.
The first. Please, Counsel Billingsley.
Apologies, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. The first is pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D two and E three to discuss a claim filed by R. Kalin. There are two matters of pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one to discuss existing litigation. They're both the matters of Humboldt County Mental Health Fiscal Period, June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, and the second is June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. The California Department of Healthcare Services Offices Administrative Hearings. Case numbers are MH twenty zero six one one seven three four BMR and MH twenty dash zero six one two eight seven six JP.
Thank you, Counsel Billingsley. Is there any public comment on closed session items?
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do have public comment.
Thank you, Ryan. That's your first caller.
Still, Ken Swawski, I bet you thought you lost me there for a little while. I was out in my greenhouse planting federally legal peas for my granddaughter and starts. I do wish to make a comment on item one. And of course, it does relate to item two, I believe. But anyway, you have a claim. And, and it's really interesting. I read, read the thing. It was redacted somewhat there as far as what was in there as far as the claim. I'd read it prior to this because I've requested it. My question for you is that in the case of your county council, when you had a claim, I don't think you have a claim, not in writing, but here you have one in writing. And have you hired an investigator? Hopefully not the other one because I don't think the one who investigated Jeffrey was all that good. Have you, are you having an investigator investigate this? I mean, and then of course, you know, that's all related to the other thing. We don't know if he's on, he's just not available there, your public defender. But, but that needs to be investigated by an investigator. It needs to be investigated by, I believe, your DA and your sheriff because there are major claims here. And I also think the conduct of the whole defenders, public defenders office needs to be investigated regarding this matter also because maybe I'm wrong, but as officers of the court, they have an obligation to report a crime rather than cover it up. So you've got a hot mess for everybody was on that houseboat allegedly. And this is way bigger than anything Jeffrey Blank ever did, probably magnify this time a hundred as far as contentious, but it doesn't seem to be getting any attention to speak of other than you're going to look at this thing right here. Highly recommend you do apples and apples and even go further with this one. So that's just my suggestion. Otherwise, I feel that you folks aren't doing your due diligence and you're selecting out certain people. And of course, the only thing that this person and Jeffrey have that I know in common, I believe they are both Jewish. But anyway, there we go. So I hope you folks do what you're supposed to in these matters and not pick and choose your battles on how you address these issues. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ken. Any further public comment on this item?
Chair Fennel, that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you. So we will go into closed session. We'll meet back in closed session at one, at twelve fifteen. Leave this meeting.
Ryan is available?
Yep. And we'll be good to go. Give me one second.
Okay.
Chair training.
I need, I need training wheels on this chair.
Stuck in the mud.
No, are we going to do this? Is it all right? Can we just?
Go. I gotta start the meeting. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get people.
Now, everybody's here, so you're safe.
Oh, never mind.
So we're back from closed session. Counsel Billingsley, anything to report out?
Yes, Chair. On item L one, there is no reportable action. And on items L three and L four, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter an agreement with the firm of Foley and Lardner to assist the county with defense of those two items.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you next week.